Good evening. I'd like to call the April 15, 2025 Lake Forest City Council Regular Meeting to Order. Let the record reflect that all council members are present tonight. Wait, we have one call out. Mayor Protem, okay. Mayor Protem is absent for that. Votes this evening will be recorded using the city's electronic voting system. At this time, the city council will convene to consider public matters. If you wish to speak, please fill out the blue speaker card at the entrance and provide it to the city clerk. If you wish to submit any written materials, please provide those to the city clerk also to the side over here. They'll be distributed to the city council as required by state law. When speaking on any item listed on the agenda, limit your comments to the subject of the item. If you wish to speak on any subject not listed on the agenda, you may speak under Public Comments portion of the meeting. Finally, please address your council, your, uh, your, uh, address to us, the council. Staff will not respond to questions. Staff will only respond to questions from the city council, not from the public speakers. The invocation tonight will be led by Chaplain Jim Davis of the Orange County Sheriff's Department. Good evening, Mr. Davis. Now, this is Holy Week, so this is a great time for you to come and bless our city council.
Okay. Shall we pray?
We shall.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this time here in Lake Forest. What a beautiful city, a wonderful community that we can be a part of. We pray your blessing on the council. Uh, we pray your blessing upon their families. Uh, we pray your blessing upon the schools, the teachers, administrators, and most of all, the students. Watch over all of them, protect and bless each one, we pray. Thank you for this wonderful country that we can live in. And thank you for this, uh, upcoming Holy Week and Easter. What a wonderful time of hope. And we thank you for that hope that's eternal. And we thank you all in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And we always keep our deputy sheriffs in our prayers for the service they provide for us. The pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Daisy Troop, 3616. Are they here? Come on up, Daisies.
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You can be seated.
Good job, girls. Would you like a picture with the council? Come on up with us. Well, thank you, Daisies, for coming and leading us in the pledge of the greatest symbol of freedom in the world, the American flag. You know, that means a lot to us. And so thank you for coming and saying the pledge with us. Who actually said that with us? You did, you did a great job. Thank you. Let's get a picture. Well, you guys have a wonderful Easter. God bless you and thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, girls. Thank you. Thank you, girls. Okay, tonight, we will take a motion for presentation number one.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay. Calling for the vote.
And that motion passes 4-0 with Mayor Protem Poceno absent.
Okay. That brings us to the legislative update by our Assembly Member, Diane Dixon. Madam City Manager, please introduce the item.
Well, it is our pleasure to have Assembly Member, the Honorable Diane Dixon here with us today. She's going to provide a legislative report as well as just share all the hard work she's been doing on our behalf.
Well, good evening, members of city council. I'm Mr. Mayor. So great to be here and great to see you all, my friends in Lake Forest. Uh, I am doing a legislative update. When I started with my eight cities, uh, last fall during our interim session, our recess period, I started this and here I am. It's April. And it's now spring break. So I'm here. And since I wasn't going anywhere this spring break, I'm busy, uh, visiting all my district cities. So I've been from Seal Beach to Lake Forest today. So keeping people informed. So I'm, it's a pleasure to be here. So, uh, without further ado, for those in the audience or in the listening audience, just to introduce myself officially, I'm Diane Dixon. I represent, uh, the 72nd District, Assembly District, and it extends from Seal Beach, includes Huntington, Seal Beach, Huntington Beach, Newport Beach, Laguna Beach, and then comes inland in Laguna Woods, Laguna Hills, Aliso Viejo, and Lake Forest. And so I'm delighted to represent a great district. And I represent you in Sacramento. I was elected, uh, first in 2022 and re-elected last November of 2024. And I just want you to know, Lake Forest is one of my favorite cities, and I don't tell that to everybody.
That was a good remark for us.
So, uh, let me just kind of jump right into life in Sacramento. Uh, there's always a lot going on. As we speak, this is really getting ready for the real, uh, solid discussions on the budget. Uh, the process is the governor introduced his budget January 15th. And so this is what the budget subcommittees are looking at. There are 12 budget subcommittees on each major line item topic. I am not on a budget subcommittee. Uh, being that I live in Southern California, the budget subcommittee, and I don't mind long meetings, but they will meet on weekends and in the evenings and they're all private. It's not just Northern California, but it's largely Northern California. I'd rather be on, I justify that because I'd rather be, uh, on the outside commenting critically about my, uh, opinions about the budget. We do have a difficult budget year. No one has yet used the word deficit, but it's could happen. Now, there are some offsetting factors. Ironically, with the brief period when the stock market went, you know, decreased, crashed, whatever you want to call it, last week, uh, there was a lot of, uh, stock selling and capital gains revenues could have been generated. I haven't seen a final report. That might help get through with those capital gains. Could be a lot of money. Uh, but then the stock markets come back up. But there could have been a lot of selling, of course. So that capital gains, uh, item will be, to be determined shortly. Uh, there are some problem areas with our budget education. Uh, UCI, uh, as all universities, education groups, as you all know, come up to Sacramento and and make their case for being retained in the budget. I know, uh, UCI is particularly challenged because they have to cut $700 million from their budget. And that's a problem. The community colleges and the Cal State colleges, I know Cal State Long Beach, just as an example, because they come into my office and say, "Help us," uh, they have to cut like 250 million. And they're, and I mean, I don't go in and analyze, and I have not done an audit of their finances. I always have the belief coming out of the business world that there's always places to cut. Uh, so I say this to both entities. Have you cut, have you frozen your hiring and, and eliminated, consolidated, created efficiencies? And they all say, "We're, we're still doing it." Yes, yes, yes. But they're under orders to expand their, uh, their population, their student population. So it's kind of, kind of between a rock and a hard place. That, those difficult spending decisions coupled with the increase, and you've read about this, and Medicaid spending, and the governor has asked for, uh, 30 million extra dollars, is it 30 billion? 30 billion extra dollars for Medicaid. I don't know where he's going to get that, but out of the general fund. That's going to be a little problematic. So, um, the one thing that disappoints me as an elected official, as you know, because I've asked you to submit, we've all asked our constituent cities to submit ideas or recommendations for grant requests for capital improvement projects. And I was able to do it my first year, but the second and third year now, uh, we haven't been able to put in those requests because the budget, uh, forecast is not robust. So more to come. We have, we had the legislature have to finalize the budget, uh, by June 15th. And the governor comes back May 15th with his revised budget, given the current economic climate. So we'll see. There are some issues that, uh, my caucus will not continue to support. $10 billion for the high-speed rail. We say the rail to nowhere, but, um, that will be upwards over $100 billion when the high-speed rail was to cost 60 or 30 and then 60 billion. So this is where money is there. It's not like California is poor. Money is there. It's a matter of priorities and a matter of allocation of capital. That's what a legislature and the governor is supposed to allocate capital. And my caucus has a different opinion on allocation of capital. For example, during the special session, uh, earlier this year in January that the governor called on the fire, the wildfire situation because of Los Angeles Palisades and Altadena. We, as a caucus, uh, recommended, because of the funding that the governor was getting from the federal government, from FEMA, 1 billion of those, uh, of that money that was coming in, that should go to fuel management. And you all relate to that really well. And, uh, fuel management, now that I know more about it than I probably did two years ago, is really, we could prevent, we can prevent forest fires if we just cleared areas. The residents are doing this all up and down the state of California and hardening their private property. It's the, uh, state lands and the forests and the public properties that are wildfire-prone areas. And now you've just, I'm sure, received from the state, from, uh, CAL FIRE on the broadening of the definition of the areas that are included, high-fire-risk areas. It's a real problem in my district. Of course, you have that high risk here. And Laguna Beach, uh, Emerald Bay, and, uh, Irvine Cove specifically, those similar to Pacific Palisades, those cities, just as you do, are adjacent to state lands or public land. And they came to me the other day to have a meeting to, I had not met with them on their fire issues. And I'm happy to be informed on it. And it turns out that that, the upper boundary of their private property, where all the home residential properties are on the nor, on the east side of Pacific Coast Highway, it abuts state land. And the state has not cleared out that brush, managed the fuel in, within, nobody can remember when it was done. It's just overgrown, overgrown, overgrown. And they've tried to, they came to me because they're frustrated. They said, "Somebody deal with the state." Who do we talk to in the state lands? Because the person in charge of that property, and this is, I'm telling you this because maybe this is something you folks want to look into, is a biologist, not a fire person or an engineer. It's a biologist who's protecting the property for environmental reasons, the native plants and the little squirrels and, and whatever, which is fine. They don't want it to be denuded. They just want it to be trimmed on a regular basis. Because if a fire starts there, just like in Pacific Palisades, it's coming right down the hill towards the water and obliterating all of their communities. They're very, very concerned about this. And, uh, so I'm taking that back up into when I talk about, I'll be making a speech or comments, uh, when the budget comes to that discussion on that section of the budget on wildfire management. The whole caucus is upset about it. The leader of our caucus, James Gallagher, he represents Paradise. And Paradise, he had been clamoring for Paradise Fuel Management prior to the horrendous Paradise fire, which was in 2018. So it's, it's a conundrum why the state is not doing wildfire management when we're spending money on, on other capital items that aren't, aren't as important as wildfire management. So just know, and insurance, property insurance, I know it's a crisis. It's a problem. So I'm mindful of the fire risk here. So just so you know, uh, I do have a bill, uh, that looks like it's going to get good support. It may even be on consent. Let me get the number here. It's, um, it's to allow, oh, AB 623 to, uh, permit in emergency fire situations, fire prevention, fuel modification and mitigation for areas in the coastal zone and in high-risk areas. So, uh, that, and dealing with SEQA to, uh, avoid going through the SEQA process for, and the Coastal Commission, so SEQA obviously applies to you, on fire mitigation. This idea came to me from Laguna Beach in my city. They had been, uh, waiting five years. They had a permit application with the Coastal Commission in the hills above Laguna Beach to do this fuel modification. They submitted the permit and within, in five years it took them, they got this permit. But during that review time, they asked the Coastal Commission, "Well, we've identified more areas that need fuel modification. Could you just amend our original application and extend the permit for those extended areas?" The Coastal Commission said, "No." And they had to start all over. And they're still in that. It's been 10 years that they've been trying to clear this. So we have these opportunities to do the right thing and clear these properties for fire prevention. And it, between SEQA and the Coastal Commission, and, uh, basically it's those two bodies. And this is what has been revealed in Pacific Palisades, as we know, and even the governor has said, and they have said, no permit going through SEQA or the Coastal Commission. So I want to extend that through the rest of the state. So it's being, not just Los Angeles because of their fire. Any area in the coastal zone or in an emergency situation can avoid getting, requiring the permit from SEQA. So that's one bill related to fires. Also, AB 624, the previous was AB 623, uh, to provide that there be federal grant funding for community relief in the event of a wildfire tragedy, just to accelerate the process getting FEMA relief directed to a directed area instead of having to go through a long-winding process to direct FEMA funds to a targeted area. So, back to the budget. We're going to continue to fight for fuel modification and fight, uh, fight for, uh, smart spending. So we will do our best in doing that. I, on some good news, or some happier news, I just want to say that last March, a month ago, was Women's History Month. And what we all do during March is honor outstanding women in our, in our districts, our respective districts. And I have eight cities, so I honored a woman in each of those. I went, sought nominations from the community, from community organizations. And through many of you, you may have seen the request for a nominee. And the nominee for Lake Forest, when I had an event and Scott, and the mayor was there, and, uh, for, to honor Mary Visconti and all the great work she's done for Lake Forest with the Chamber of Commerce. And it was just a pleasure to honor, honor her. And she got, uh, an official assembly resolution. So it was just honored to tell you how much I appreciate what the Chamber of Commerce does in Lake Forest. And it's, it is fantastic. Um, what else do I want to update? Let me tell you a couple other bills. How, how is your, do you have sober living issues here in Lake Forest? I, I don't hear too much about that. All right. Well, I have three bills. And this is actually, um, an effort that most all members of the Orange County delegation are carrying a bill, uh, related to drug and alcohol rehabilitation. And I'm carrying three. And this has been going on for several years of carrying these bills. And the chairwoman of the Health Committee in the Assembly is, uh, Assemblywoman Bonta. And we're trying to correct the misimpression that she has and other members of her committee have, that the community has a problem with having these, uh, facilities in their neighborhoods. Years ago, that was really the talking point. And that's where residents were. And when I was on the city council on Newport Beach, the residents were complaining about that. And that doesn't go very far in Sacramento. So we really adjusted our, uh, discussion about drug and alcohol rehabilitation. And I did a, uh, one of the, uh, projects I did, we completed, I recommended an audit of the Department of Healthcare Services that is responsible for some aspects of, uh, treatment, but I was using too strong a word, just dealing with drug and alcohol addiction. So I did this through the state auditor, and it took about a year to get the results. And it was very revealing. And it's informed all of the delegation, Democrats and Republicans, both parties, how we address fixing the problem in our communities. And we're not using, we're using the correct term, which is we want people in these facilities, in these homes, to get well. It's all about helping people be rehabilitated. What we found out with the audit report, and this is all publicly announced, I announced this last October, that the Department of Healthcare Services was the first agency I audited, they don't provide medical treatment. A lot of people, I did not know that. A lot of people don't know that. You'll, we'll see people coming from out of state, going into these, uh, regulate, licensed and regulated in our communities by the Department of Healthcare Services. Local government cannot regulate. Well, there really is nothing to regulate because there are six beds and they're only offering detoxification, uh, programs, not even, there's no medicine, no medical treatment. I did not know that. The Department of Social Services, now that's the subject of my next audit this year, requesting an audit, does dispense medical treatment for drug and alcohol rehabilitation. But the key finding that came out of the audit was what's typical in the community is a single operator will come into the neighborhoods, come into the cities, come into the neighborhoods, and buy up adjacent properties and manage the, the services for their six and, six beds and under. It's up to six beds. That's what's licensed by the state of California. And what they've done, according to the audit, is reinstitutionalize, uh, people in need. Uh, 40 years ago, Governor Reagan signed the law, signed the bill to close down mental, mental health facilities. And communities are to take care of people in need of mental health. Well, getting them out of the institution. Well, because these operators are aggregating all these homes very close to one another and building structures on properties, so they're all becoming reinstitutionalized. This was like an aha moment from this audit, saying these people are not being properly treated. They're not going to get well by these operators who are just organizing their services. They put people in a van and take them somewhere else and bring them back home. They're not integrating into the neighborhood, which is the original intent, that these people should be in family-like settings. That's what the law says. So I'm bringing this forward. That's my Assembly Bill number three to, uh, require that there is a minimum of 300 feet, uh, and that's on the low side. It should be 1,000, but I'm trying to get this through, just to have some distance requirement, using the correct analysis from the audit, which brings a lot of credibility to the discussion, that people are not being integrated into the neighborhood. They're just in these, reinstitutionalized. So I have to make this argument to the Chair of the Health Committee next week when I request to meet her. So that's what we're trying to do. Lori, Assemblywoman Lori Davies has some bills. Senator Blakespear has some bills. Uh, and, uh, Assembly Member Alvalino, Valencia up in Anaheim has some bills. So bipartisan, by camera, we're all coming at this to help people get well. One, just to short-circuit this, to summarize, one key finding, when you hear of this audit, that I did not realize, the state of California only regulates licensed facilities for the detoxification, no medical treatment, for six beds and under. And they really don't regulate it. It's just they get a license to operate. There's no continuing, uh, regulation. There's no management of their services. It's simply, are they licensed? And this has been the, the door opener to operators that are not really quality operators, in my opinion. They're good operators and not so good operators, that take advantage of the fact that it's easier to be licensed by the state of California because of California does not come in and regulate and do check, checkups. So we found in the audit that So we found in the audit that an average complaint, which is supposed to be identified and resolved within 30 to 60 days, sometimes takes up to two years. So Department of Healthcare Services did not come out well in the survey. But the one key finding that I did not anticipate, there are three different buckets. There's the Department of Healthcare Services for detoxification, there is a Department of Social Services, and there's medical treatment there. That's really my focus now. When you hear the third bucket, sober living homes, just know if anybody is moving here with their child or adolescent from Ohio or anywhere else to come to California to get sober, they are not going to get sober in a sober living home. A sober living home is not regulated, there's no medical treatment, there's no professional service requirement, there's nothing. And what the audit found is typically, they're just a group of people living together, and typically a former addict is like the house manager. It is reprehensible what is going on. So the bottom line is, we want people to get well, so they are not booted out of these homes, and then they become homeless. And that's really a source of homelessness. One other bill I have, AB 3 was to put the distance. I also have a bill that would, upon a patient going into a Department of Healthcare Services six-and-under home, that they, the insurance company has to know that this person does not have insurance. This has become a real problem because these bad operators don't tell the patient that their insurance will not cover their stay. So they get them in there, and they are paying several thousand dollars a month, in many cases 15,000 or 20,000 dollars a month, thinking, the patient will think that the insurance company is going to reimburse whoever's paying for it, and they're not. So within days, they get booted out of there. So my bill will be attestation that this patient is not covered by insurance, so it's fully understood. And then the insurance company knows that this person is in a facility that does not provide medical treatment. So there's just a lot coming out, it's going to take a while to get these, get them through the process, but we're hopefully on the right track, just getting some good information. I'm probably over my time, I just wanted to look at one other bill that I wanted to talk about. How's your e-bike situation in Lake Forest these days?
It's crazy.
Okay, we're all trying to deal with it, and it's been frustrating. Two bills I introduced, it didn't go anywhere, then I discovered why. There's a very powerful e-bike lobby in the state of California. And I put two and two together one day, when I'm flying to Sacramento on Mondays, that this gentleman who always says good morning to me, I realized he's the e-bike lobbyist. And so this year, maybe three, two months ago, a month ago, I had an idea for an e-bike bill, and so he comes up to me at the airport, and John Wayne, and said, Diane, I'd like to talk to you about your bill. I said, great. And he says, I just can't support it, for various reasons. And I said, okay, start over. What would you support, Mr. Lobbyist? And he said, make the minimum age for purchasing, for purchasing, an e-bike 16 years. And I said, okay, why? And he said, because oftentimes, parents will give a credit card to their child of any age and say, go buy an e-bike. So the parent has to accompany a child who's 16 years or younger to buy an e-bike. And that will limit and restrain a lot of the purchasing of young people, and then the educational process of how to operate an e-bike. And this is for the Class III bikes, these are the ones that are really souped up and go the fastest. So we're trying to control it that way. He will support it, he will recommend to the committee, the Transportation Committee members, that he is supportive of it. So when he is supportive of it, there's a good chance that we can get that through. There has been no, no, none restriction or requirements. Assemblymember Davies has done, we've all done bills, and they don't get through. I'm hoping, keep your fingers crossed, that this will get through, because he's the one that seems to hold all the power on e-bikes. I mean, I have nothing against e-bikes, I just want them to be safe. When I have town halls on the subject of e-bikes, I did this recently in Huntington Beach, I thought it would all be young people, it's senior citizens, because the gasoline is so expensive, they buy e-bikes, they could get around to the store, get around their neighborhood. They love their e-bikes, but they're afraid to ride them because some of these young people are scurrying in and out of the lanes, and it's very unsafe for them. So we have a lot, the legislature has a lot of work to do. There are two pilot studies, one in Escondido and one up in Marin County, dealing with helmets and all kinds of safety practices, and the results of that study will come back this coming year, I don't know when. But anyway, so we can't, we need to do some, there are a lot of things we need to do, and that's one of them. I guess that's it on the major, I have other e-bikes, oh, human trafficking, let me just spend a minute on human trafficking. Do you have a problem with human trafficking? Do you know if you have a problem?
We don't.
Well, there are a lot of problems in Orange County on human trafficking, and talked to our friends at the Sheriff's Department and Sheriff Barnes. And when he has spoken in groups that I've hosted, I'll ask my staff, let's put together the current data. The current data is 10 years old. And so I was, when I had my get acquainted meeting with the new Assembly Chairman of Public Safety, Nick Schultz, Assemblymember Schultz, former mayor of Burbank, and he, lawyer, former prosecutor, and when I was talking to him, I'd read his bio, and it said that he has prosecuted human trafficking cases. So I said the same question to him, where is there a gap in the law regarding human trafficking? And he said, I'll tell you, I got an idea for you. Now, this is great, I perked up, because if he's in favor of it, it will get through public safety. There is no database for human trafficking. In the state of California, and typically in any Department of Justice, there's a list of crimes that are prosecuted under the penal code and the government code, and it's a long list of crimes. There's nothing on human trafficking. And it makes it very difficult to prosecute human trafficking when there's no crime in the penal code, and it has to be captured in other kinds of kidnapping or that type of thing. So we're clearing, we're establishing a database, and our local law enforcement keeps track, but then we have to aggregate, someone wants to get the total California data, you have to call every law enforcement or district attorney of all the counties to get this data. So this will be in a state data repository on the crime, the number of crimes committed and the number of victims. So we're going to manage that data, so once we start collecting this data, we could start dealing with the problem. A lot of people have no idea, I couldn't tell you, it's been a number of 1,000 or 2,000 for years, when Sheriff Barnes will say, there are thousands of them. We are in destination communities in Orange County, Anaheim has a big human trafficking problem, the beach communities do, but we don't have any visibility on the true problem. So with that data, that will make a difference in how we look at human trafficking and develop laws to deal with it. So I want to thank you for your time today. There's a lot going on in Sacramento, I enjoy what I'm doing, it's a good fight to fight to just bring awareness, there are a lot of things I didn't talk to about business. I will say this, this is kind of my closing point, California over-regulates, over-litigates, and over-taxes. And I'm trying to deal with all of those issues. I want to protect our businesses, protect our people that pay taxes, and deal with all the lawyers who file lawsuits against our businesses. So anyway, I appreciate your time, and if you want to ask me any questions, that's fine, but thank you very much.
Thank you for coming and giving us an update. Counsel, do we have any questions?
Any of you could call me anytime, you know you can, so just call me if you have any questions.
So I got a real quick question. Governor Newsom came in with a surplus, and now we're at a deficit. What is that deficit that we're at now?
Well, like I said...
Seventy-eight billion?
You know, this is one of the comments I made the last couple of years, the state budget process is nothing like we all do, did at the local level, where you know what your revenues are, and you put a budget together, and you work within that. There's always these moving parts, and what, they say it's balanced after he borrows $7 billion from some other account, like he did this last year.
So you don't really have an answer for that?
What?
You don't have an answer for where we are?
We don't, I don't, nobody knows that. He put, just what I said, he put in, he said it's balanced, in January, he said it's balanced, but in order to get to a balanced budget, he has to transfer $7 billion from a reserve fund. And that's, people are being very, who watch these things are very critical to take money, as you well know, out of a reserve fund. But that's how he's balancing the budget. But that was January. We'll see, now that he's $30 billion short on Medicaid, how he's going to cover that deficit.
Well, as I tell to all my legislative friends up in Sacramento, do not drink the Kool-Aid up there. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody from the public that would like to comment?
No, we don't, Mayor.
If I could.
You may.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you, thank you for being here, we really appreciate all your support and advocacy and availability. And I know you did a town hall here some time ago, and I would just see if you might be willing to do another one at some point in the future.
Of course, love it. Kristen is here, or somewhere?
Yeah.
We'll book it.
Yeah, and you did it right here on our campus, and it was great, and a lot of people, I think, enjoyed it, and I did too, so...
I think it's time, that's one of the first ones I did a few years ago, it's time to come back.
Yeah, we'd love to have you come back and do another one.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And your distinguished woman event that you guys had at the Pacific Club was wonderful. Obviously, we think the world of Mary Visconti, she's done a great job for our chamber and the business community, so thank you for recognizing her, thank you for the job you're doing in Sacramento, and we wish you a happy and joyous Easter.
Well, thank you. And Mary is hosting again in the fall, when we, when I moderate, when District Attorney Spitzer and Sheriff Barnes come for the Law and Order Town Hall, and I'll be moderating that again in October, I think that is.
Okay, well, thank you, we'll see, happy Easter.
Have a good evening.
God bless, thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, happy Easter.
So that brings us to public comments. If you would like to make a comment, please fill out a blue speaker card and give it to the city clerk, and your name will be called. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. The council and staff will not respond to questions or comments during the public comment period. If you leave your contact information, staff will contact you to address the issues raised during your comment. When you are called to speak, come to the podium. Your three minutes will begin when the green light is on. The green light will remain on for two minutes. When the light changes from green to yellow, speakers will have one minute to conclude their comments. When the light changes from yellow to red, please conclude your thoughts and return to your seat. The timer will not display on the screen. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we have one speaker, and that is Andrew O'Connor.
Mr. O'Connor.
Andrew O'Connor, Fithill Ranch. I tell you, Assemblywoman Dixon, you've got a lot of work to do, and I applaud your offer, but man, keep up the, keep up the fight for us Republicans. First, I'd like to give a shout-out to Public Works and Peggy Samantha responding to my request of burned-out medium lamps in all five districts. I wonder why the councilmen in the districts did not report these burned-out lights. Second, I'd like to give a big shout-out to D-3 Supervisor Don Wagner. The Board of Supervisors passed a vitally important resolution that will allow OC Public Works to abate weeds and combustible vegetation that create a fire hazard that I've been talking about for the last six months from the Selector. This decision ensures proper measures are taken to mitigate fire dangers that threaten our community's safety, specifically Whiting Ranch. Maybe Director Voits had an ear to the supervisor, and if he did, I appreciate that, Mayor. Number three, the Orange County Board of Supervisors on April 8th approved $4.5 million settlement with T-Mobile for its part in setting of the 2020 Silverado Fire. The county paid out $9.5 million to settle claims for the airport fire, but nobody in county government was held accountable. The Aspen Project, I've asked time and again, but nobody's answered my question on the budget, who's paying for the demolition of the office building? Who is paying for this? My lawyers received confirmation from the California Civil Rights Department, they accepted my case against Councilman Robert, Pro-Town Mayor Robert Pecano and D-2 Councilman Doug Servo. I asked both as councils, one contacted to reply to the questions asked from the California Civil Rights Department on behalf of my lawsuit against both of you. The number 46, this is how many appearances Benjamin Miao Yu has made. Thursday, April 17th, at 1:30 PM, will be your 47th appearance for his violation on 627-234 corporal injury on a spouse or cohabitant. Will the councilmen finally enter a plea, or are you going to delay it once again? Well, what are you going to do? Are you going to enter a plea? I provided your ethics pledge tonight that you had, and in there it says you won't harm a citizen, a resident, but you have been found guilty of a misdemeanor and found guilty of a felony for corporal injury on a spouse or cohabitant, and you've been found guilty of a misdemeanor of blocking EMT, trying to render a relief to the victim. Council comments, we talked about the e-bikes, that they all went to open houses, but no one mentioned about going to sports parks. So I'd like to ask the councilmen to raise the right hand, who's gone to the city park to observe this?
Mr. O'Connor, thank you for your comments, and happy Easter to you. City Clerk, do we have any other public comments?
No, we don't, Mayor.
Okay, that brings us to Consent Calendars. Items 2 through 10, all matters under the City Council Consent Calendar will be considered routine and will be enacted by one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the City Council or staff request specific items to be removed from the Consent Calendar for separate action. Have there been any requests to remove any items from the Consent Calendar?
Yes, Mayor, we have requests to speak on Consent Calendar Items Number 3, 4, and 9.
3, 4, and 9. Counsel, do you see any? I'll take a motion then.
I will move the balance.
Do you need a second for that? I'll second that. And I'll call for the vote, thank you.
That motion passes 4-0 with Mayor Pro-Town Pecano absent.
And that'll bring us to item number 3, polled by the public.
Yes, the speaker on that is Andrew O'Connor.
Andrew O'Connor, Fithill Ranch. You know, last month, discussion is strategic, and where we stand with it, all that, and reflecting on it, and going back and looking at it, they reflect on everything they did good. So of course, the council, good job, staff, and everything's good, because they reported on all the good stuff. They skipped around all the hard stuff. Why is that, Mayor? Why would they skip around the hard stuff? Because they do it, and they're not going to do it. And you should ask them, why haven't this been done? But you, as a mayor, said everything was good. That's not the way that you should operate, Mayor. You should hold these people accountable. You should ask them the hard questions, but you don't. You just constantly take the soft and the good and go on with it. Specifically, SP Number 80, City Manager Rose, Law Enforcement Staffing Needs Evaluation by Adding Two Deputies, Fiscal Year 2023-2024. City Manager, did you add two deputies during that time? Yes or no? The answer is no, you didn't. Public safety is your number-one priority, is the city manager, to make the city safe. SP Number 80 was never addressed. This is, I talk about skipping around the hard part. You didn't address public safety. Captain Pulse can't be accountable if he shorthanded two deputies. But you are so much, want that balance sheet to be so perfect, that you don't want to spend $900,000 on public safety, because you live in Garden Grove. Once you get out of your corner office up there, walked out the door...
Mr. O'Connor, please direct your comments to us and chill here.
Okay, Mayor, I'll address it to you. What do you think about public safety? What do you think about SP 80? Why haven't we hired those two deputies? It's right here in the report, you don't ask that question? You don't ask the tough questions to the city manager? That means it was all the soft stuff. Why are you going to hire these deputies? I've been asking for it. 2023-24 budget, do you know the budget we're in now, sir? 24-25. She skipped over it, because she wants her balance sheet to look good. So when she goes out and talks to all the city managers, that's what she talks about. Look how good Lake Forest budget is. That's more important to her than public safety? I had an issue up at the park the other day, a small issue, the deputy never showed up and waited for half an hour. Probably was low crime and all that, but it's a thing. Take care of the hard stuff!
Thank you for your comments, Mr. O'Connor.
Take care of the hard stuff, Mayor!
Thank you. You know, I'd like just to comment about our two extra deputies. Obviously, we... Obviously, we consult with our sheriff's department, law enforcement personnel, and safety means a lot to us. And so, the fact is that if the crime numbers were at a point where we needed those, I think those will be enacted. So, I think it's all because of what's going on. So, I'll take number four polled by the public.
Yes, and that speaker is Andrew O'Connor.
Andrew O'Connor, Fithill Ranch, you know, Mayor. You want data? You want consultants? Why don't you just step out in the city and see what's going on for crying out loud? You didn't even know, you didn't even know about the e-bikes up in the sports park.
We know about the e-bikes. Are you going to talk about number four of the minutes?
Well, yeah, I'll talk about number four. Okay, so, I think we spent a lot of money on consultants, data, which you want, and it proves it gets us nowhere. For instance, that True North survey, $140,000 we spent for that thing? What did we get out of it, Mayor? When I say True North project, what comes to your mind? What just comes right off your mind that you learned from that? Did you learn anything from it? It's the same consultant we've been using for like thirty, twenty years every other year.
That's true.
I've lived, right, true, same guy. Do you think he's going to say anything bad about Lake Forest doing things bad? Of course not. He wants Deborah to keep giving him a job. It's this whole soft sting that everybody does as a community and nobody looks at the hard stuff. Because if we look at the hard stuff, ooh, I want to go there. True North is not going to go there. So, Mayor, what, what did you learn from the True North? I've lived here thirty-four years. I've read all those surveys. It's basically the same stuff he has every year. Why doesn't he call me? How come I haven't been called thirty-four years? Okay, why don't you guys just tell him, hey, why don't you call, well, number one, call O'Connor? Never got called, never got surveyed. Again, because you want the soft touch. I'll give it to him straight. He doesn't want to hear from me. You don't want my data to report, but you're doing what, eighty people, other thing, a population of eighty-six thousand? Did you look at those questions that they asked? They are so long. Do you really think a person on the telephone wants to go through that many ridiculous questions that he asks year after year after year? I looked at these questions and I went back to nineteen ninety-seven, I think. They're basically the same questions. But forget it. Then, we go spend forty-one thousand on the cultural edge community consultants. So, it's a hundred and forty thousand True North, forty-one thousand Cultural, that's a hundred and eighty thousand. We got Cosmont going to come up here that's getting us for ninety thousand. So, we've spent a two-hundred-and-seventy thousand to learn about our city? Really? We're flushing over a quarter of a million dollars on consultants to learn about our city. And the thing with the cultural edge consultants, one of them said they didn't even know the Civic Center existed. Can you believe that? We've got a resident didn't even know the Civic Center complex existed, but we're going to spend forty-one thousand dollars.
Thank you for your comments.
And you get data and you don't know what the hell to do with it.
So, that pulls us to number nine. Is, who's the speaker for number nine from the public?
That speaker is Andrew O'Connor.
Andrew, Mr. O'Connor. You're on deck again.
Oh, yeah, Brightview. Yeah, that's a good one. I'm going high-tech, Mayor.
Okay.
I should bring my laptop up. Come on, baby, fire up. Andrew O'Connor, Fithill Ranch. Here we go. So, I'm looking at the contract here. I'm on page forty-four, forty-eight. It says compensation, scope of work. It's pretty detailed. I don't know, am I supposed to be talking to Keith on this or what? Who oversees this, McGovern or what?
Well, we're going on, the staff will hear you. Thank you.
So, basically, it's saying, do I have this right? We're spending four-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars on this contract? Schedule of services goes down, goes down, all this stuff. You get down to the bottom here. First Amendment total compensation, four-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-two dollars to take care of this complex? Am I, am I reading that correctly? That's the question. We're spending a half a million on this complex to Brightview. That's the way I read it. Am I reading this wrong? Because if I am, somebody needs to correct me. But it says four-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-two dollars total compensation for the Civic. This is not slopes on Lake Forest Drive or something else. This is the Civic Center. A half a million dollars. Now, if I'm wrong, someone send me an email tomorrow and say, Mr. O'Connor, you were misreading the document. You need to understand it this way. This, I just pulled it up. I'm on page forty-eight, forty-eight of the whole document. And it says, I'll read it again, four-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand and forty-two. I think this is ridiculous. The perimeter of this facility is drought-resistant plants. I know you got a slope in the back, but, so, it's too much money. Correct me if I'm wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Half a million dollars.
Now, as, as I read before we call for the vote, on item number one, it says Civic Center landscape and streetscape maintenance. Is that written correctly?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that is written correctly.
So, that's throughout the city, is the streetscapes?
No, this is just for the Civic Center. I'm assuming you're talking about item number nine?
Yeah, item number nine.
Yes.
And streetscape maintenance.
Correct, so that would be the landscaping along the streetscape.
Here.
Yes, in front of the Civic Center.
The Civic Center. So, Civic Center and streetscape outside the.
Correct.
Not for the whole city?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I'll take a motion for item number.
Motion to prove item number two to nine, two to ten.
No, three, four, and nine.
Okay, the one pulled up.
Can I get a second? I'll second that.
Okay.
The three, four, and nine.
Nine, yeah.
Call for the vote.
And that motion passes for zero with Mayor Pro-Town Pecano absent.
Okay. That brings us to public hearing. Item number eleven. Madam City Clerk, please read the item.
Thank you, Mayor. The title of item number eleven is Resolution Updating Fees and Charges for Various Municipal Services.
Madam City Manager, you want to listen or introduce the presentation?
Yes, tonight we have a presentation by our Assistant Director of Finance, Amy Lewis, and we're going to talk about our annual update to our fees.
Okay. I think they're moving on that. Okay. Well, Nadia had a nice presentation and was on slide. You're going to have to wing it and just walk through it.
Well, I mean, I could tell you what the prize would look like.
I'm just teasing you. Okay, wait, just hold on. What's that? We can, we can take, we'll take a break while they work on that. Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. Okay, our five minutes is over.
All right.
All right, we're ready to go.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I am here to present a resolution to update fees and charges for various municipal services. In May of 2024, the city adopted a resolution for the comprehensive fee update. Updated fees for culture, leisure, and recreation, as well as management and support, took effect July 1st of 2024, followed by planning, engineering, building and safety, and community preservation, which took effect on July 8th of 2024. Tonight's proposal includes our routine annual updates to the master schedule of user and regulatory fees. If adopted, the changes will take effect on July 1st of 2025. As part of this year's updates, no changes are proposed to culture, leisure, and recreation or management and support fee categories. Since these fees are not structured to target full cost recovery, CPI increases are applied only to those that are. So, no further updates are needed for those categories at this time. The changed fees reflect a 3.3 Consumer Price Index adjustment for fiscal year 25-26. This ensures our fees keep pace with inflation and offset the costs of existing services. These adjustments help the city recover service-specific costs, meet legal requirements, ease pressure on the general fund, and support services continuity. This 3.3 CPI adjustment does not increase the level of our cost recovery. It simply helps us keep pace with inflation. As the cost to provide services naturally increases over time, this adjustment ensures the fee revenue keeps up, preventing further general fund subsidy. In short, it's about maintaining our cost recovery level and not raising it. Staff is also recommending the addition of two new fees, an appeal hearing fee for eighty-five dollars and a commercial vending vehicle permit fee with an initial fee of a hundred and eighty-nine dollars and a renewal fee of ninety-five. Staff is also recommending the removal of the cyber cafe license fee. An amendment to this program is scheduled for Planning Commission on May 8th of 2025 and would tentatively come to you on June 3rd, providing further information on this amendment. This year's update is an interim adjustment focused on maintaining alignment with services through CPI. Later this year, the city will begin a comprehensive fee study to evaluate cost recovery levels in greater depth. With that, staff recommends the adoption of a resolution titled, "A Resolution of the City, Council of the City of Lake Forest, California Establishing Updated Fees and Charges for Various Municipal Services." I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Do we have anything from the public?
No, Mayor.
Okay, counsel, do you have any questions?
Any.
Councilman Tenemer.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So, you indicated that we were only going to be applying the CPI to ones where we've established some target for recovery?
Correct, so it's going to be mostly in engineering and building and safety where we have a higher level of cost recovery than we do for, let's say, community services and recreation.
Just curious why we wouldn't apply it across the board? Because we have increases for all services, unless I'm missing something. We have increases labor costs and things go up. Why wouldn't you just apply it across the board?
Typically, we, typically, we don't because that is a sensitive subject that we would like further studies because those are the areas that are subsidized based on what the services that they provide. So, your sports teams versus your building developers.
Okay. We'll have an opportunity to review this again at a future meeting, this concept?
Yes.
Okay. I, if it's possible, I'd like to get just an understanding as to, for those that we are not increasing, assuming the same level of participation, what, what does that mean in terms of how much more general fund we're going to be providing for those services?
Sure, yeah, we can talk about that at the Audit Committee.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Counsel?
No.
So, periodically, we do this so that fact is that we don't have to skip a year and have a bigger increase, so it's better to do it more often so there's gradual?
Correct, we do it every other year. So, this next coming-up year, for next fiscal year, we'll be doing a comprehensive study with time studying of, an M study of all fees. And in the in-between year, we usually do a CPI increase.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I'll move staff, I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay. Oh, and I, I opened the public hearing for public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, so I'll close public comments now. And the public meeting is over and I'll call for a vote. Motion, motion made and seconded.
And that motion passes for zero with Mayor Pro-Town Pecano absent.
That brings us to discussion items twelve through fifteen. Madam City Clerk, please read item number twelve.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number twelve is the Shopping Center Analysis Results Presented by Cosmont.
Mayor, tonight we have a presentation by Ken Hera. He is the principal of the Cosmont Companies. This is his third presentation to you. That's wrapping up our shopping center analysis.
He knows the city pretty darn good.
Yeah, well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's good to be back. And, yeah, we've been working with you all for almost a year and we embarked upon the shopping center analysis and have done some council workshops, certainly been speaking to stakeholders, if you will, in the marketplace and gathering lots of data. Tonight is an executive summary of the culmination of the report. And knowing, though, that that information is available to the city and I think part of the staff report, there was probably about a twenty-four-page executive summary. But the depth and breadth of the analysis is, again, information that, that you all are able to utilize now. I'm going to go through sort of a high-level discussion about that, project overview, key findings, economic development strategies, and next steps. And again, I'm Ken Hera with Cosmont Companies. My colleague is also here, Andrew Perez, who's the Vice President of Cosmont. So, project overview, this is pretty high-level, but what we embarked upon in the analysis is demographic and economic profile, information for the city, retail market analysis, market conditions, engagement, again, with brokers, stakeholders, local businesses to understand some of the strengths and challenges that are being faced. In the world of retail, we drilled down on eighteen designated shop, designated shopping centers. Those centers were identified in the original RFP that we responded to. And we analyzed those centers in terms of vacancy and traffic and trips and, and sort of general health. The assessment of retail leakage and frequency of visits by different residents. We did a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats of six of the centers. You have a mixed-use overlay that was done vis-à-vis your general plan. And there are centers that can allow for mixed use, which means that residential could be part of a redevelopment of some, some of the centers in the city. And then, we did an overview of economic development strategies. So, the objective of the analysis, or why is the analysis important? You know, what I talk about internally with my team at Cosmont is, so what and now what? So, I think those are questions that we want to try to answer in the work that we do. This is a set of bullet points that wants to answer why or so what, you know, with the, with the data that's collected. We believe that the city really should be experts in the market conditions, the trends, the demographics, the retail market metrics, the status of properties, projects, stakeholders. Because at the end of the day, market intelligence or market knowledge is, is a very powerful tool and allows for the, the proper strategic economic development decision-making by the city. Retail and land uses are really constantly evolving. We've seen a lot of it, not just because of a pandemic, but the world of retail is constantly changing. And online sales have a, have a lot to do with that. Frankly, the consumer has a lot to do with what's changing in retail. That's because the consumer is the, is the ultimate purchaser of those goods and services. That's because the consumer is the is the ultimate purchaser of those goods and services. And technology has a big part of that. Well, technology includes our phones. There was some 55% of the 20-some-odd billion dollars that was spent over the holidays was done via your phone. For online shopping, half of it, more than half of it, was done on your phone. Which means those are big purchases that are being taken down by the use of technology. And you can do these things on the run, has a big impact on brick-and-mortar retail. So the the technology that the consumer gets to use and then the demand, in our estimation, for convenience. The consumer is really looking for convenience. And it has an impact on the business models and formats. As an example, how do businesses use the internet and social media marketing? How do they provide for pickup and delivery and drive-throughs to satisfy the convenience of the consumer? Another point of of why the analysis is important is the public sector really needs private investment. You know, that's the business that they're in, the developers, the shopping center owners. The private investment folks and partnerships are, they're in the the business of taking risk. They take risk by owning shopping centers and they take risk when there's vacancies in those shopping centers and the and the need for reinvestment. So that's led by developers and owners and brokers, retailers and different businesses. There's a symbiotic relationship and and what I like to say is that we're in the relationship business. So the public and private sectors sort of need each other in this ecosystem. The city has a strong stock of desired, well-located retail, frankly, with pretty low vacancy. There is competition from other cities. I mean, cities don't try to jab each other with competition, but cities love to get their own general funds and their own vacancies filled. So there's a natural set of competition. And then lastly, it's important for the city to be flexible when it comes to zoning and business friendliness through continued business retention, attraction, and expansion. And you'll hear me talk a lot about business retention, attraction, and span expansion, but obviously keeping the community priorities top of mind. So here's the 18 centers that we looked at. We tried to divide up, and and I know that you might have seen this before in one of our workshops, but we tried to divide up between northern, central, and southern. It was how we viewed it so that we could analyze those different regions of the different 18 centers, about 2.3 million square feet. High-level demos, 88,000 folks that live in the city. I like to look at the metrics that include the bachelor's degrees or the education levels, very high at 54%. It matters to the businesses and the retailers. $181,000 average household income, obviously, it's very, very strong, and you can see how that compares to Orange County in California. The pie chart is a breakdown of your tax revenues. And the reason we look at it is because we've looked at all cities. And you are pretty balanced with respect to property tax, sales tax, and transient occupancy tax. There are some cities that are over 50% reliant on TOT. And those cities are, you know, visitor-based cities, right? Mammoth and even Anaheim, these are high hotel tax revenue-reliant cities. So we look at the average, the average is very close to what your city is, 33% from property tax, 29% from sales tax, 8% from TOT. And we've seen a skew of sales tax. Some cities have a gigantic reliance on sales tax. So the balance, I we think, is a positive in so much as you're you're gaining from these three categories that we tend to look pretty closely at. Vacancy, what CoStar does, which is sort of the main data source for retail information, is CoStar tells us that there's about 4.2 million square feet of retail in the city and about 2.8% vacancy. We just looked at it, Andrew and I, and that vacancy number per CoStar is up. It's like in the 3-plus percent right now. But it's going to change and fluctuate right on a quarter-by-quarter basis. But here's our main point, is that at 2.8% per CoStar, it's in a very, very healthy state compared to the submarket, which is at 5%, and Orange County, which is at 4%. Let me do a quick reconciliation. You'll see the 2.8%, which is CoStar vacancy. But we know that as we surveyed your centers and we surveyed the city, there's hundreds of thousands of retail boxes, if you will, that are vacant. CoStar didn't see or recognize at that time the Cinemark being vacant. So we reconciled that for you all. And when you add up the boxes that we saw were vacant, that's 156,000 feet. If you add it to 118,000 feet, you go to 6.6% vacancy. Again, still a pretty stable, relatively healthy vacancy. And then we identified with for each of those boxes or retail spaces that were vacant, the status of them. And quite frankly, the Cinemark 85,000-foot box, which is a big vacancy, and the theater business is facing quite a number of challenges, as as we all know today. I just heard that Elise Oviedo, the regal there, is going to really sort of shrink their number of seats. And that's because the theater business has really been challenged by a lot of other options that the consumer has, not the least of which is technology and streaming. But nonetheless, that property, 85,000 feet, is an escrow. It's an escrow to be sold. There was a lot of positive feedback that the broker received, the brokers received, on interest for that 85,000-square-foot space. And so it gets back to the story, everything's about a story, is that, and look, if you had 12% vacancy and we didn't have any retailers looking at your city, I would tell you, that's an issue, that's a problem, we need to do something different. Then sometimes it's just business retention, right? You want to hang on to the businesses that you have that are doing healthy. Sometimes it's a lot of business attraction. So that 85,000-square-foot space, I know that there's been a relationship building, which is important to us and me because I'm part of the ICSC leadership team, which is the shopping center industry, and it's really about relationships. You have to know what's happening in the marketplace, being able to pick up the phone, talk to the different folks that are trying to market spaces and help themselves, but also help yourself as a city. So that that property is an escrow and it's quite positive. The other 99-cent stores that are vacant, one was sold to another shopping center. One, frankly, was leased to a grocery store, which is the 99-cent store on Lake Forest. It says, you know, coming soon to Fresh Choice Market. And then the CVS, excuse me, which is in the, which is off of Rockfield. My understanding and my discussions with the owner is they just control the space, CVS does. And once that comes back to the landlord, they're going to be motivated to lease it. And you have a 27,000-square-foot space that's in a good location in your city. So I I'm trying to tell the story that the 6% or the 2.8% isn't really the concern that the city should have with respect to big holes of vacancy. Now, we have to pay attention to this because leasing 20,000 feet or 80,000 feet is expensive. And so these landlords have are having to put a lot of money into these buildings. So understanding their position is important. Other notable vacancies, the CVS, which is on Ridge Route, has become an animal clinic and is actually open. So as we look at CoStar, if we pull that up based on more recent data, this data is probably just from the end of 2024. If we look at that, it may very well show that it's not a vacancy CVS anymore, that it's a it's a leased space or it doesn't show up in the vacancy report. The 99-cent store at Lake Forest Town Center, that's the one, I apologize, that says that there's a grocery store coming. And I talked to the broker on that one, and a different 99-cent store got recently leased to a grocery store. So we're trying to provide the reconciliation and not just take the data for what it's worth, but be thoughtful about it. And not just quantify it, but also qualify it. So that's kind of the health. Let's talk a little bit about economic strategies. Frankly, you are a pretty proactive city in that area. The fact that you're doing a study like this, the fact that you're already doing many of these things, which I want to talk about briefly, expedited business assistance meetings, partnership with the Chamber, Taste of Lake Forest, of course, and other ribbon-cutting events, Business Spotlight Program, marketing, the biannual roundtables. I know I attended one of the roundtables. I think those are really good events. I think if you have them once a year, twice a year, four times a year, frankly, quarterly, I think they can be very enlightening because then you're having brokers and property managers come to you. You're building those relationships and you're getting educated. And frankly, you want them to call you and say, hey, here's a challenge I'm having. Or here's something good that's going on, and vice versa. Printing materials and, of course, some of the zoning strategies that you've already implemented vis-à-vis your general plan update. Some of the other areas, like I said, bear business expansion, attraction, and retention, value capture zoning. You've already done some of that with your mixed-use overlay. And then tax increment financing districts, which is a tool that we've been using with a lot of communities. And of course, the grant dollars that go with that. So with respect to the business attraction, you know, some of our recommendations are maintaining those strong relationships, continue that outreach, attend opportunities and conferences at ICSC because you will get educated at those conferences. Develop maybe some technical assistance programs, and we'll talk about that in a minute. And then making sure that things are streamlined because one complaint from the marketplace and the private sector is it takes a long time to get a permit. It sure does. And if you have to go through CEQA, God forbid, it's that much longer, but welcome to California. So those environmental hurdles or the permitting hurdles that take time are the things that are costly to some of the private sector folks that are trying to get businesses open. Some examples of this bear program, the business attraction, is just a few Indian Wells. We used a data source, Placer AI. And quite frankly, Sprouts said, hey, we've got a store in La Quinta. We're not going to a vacant Ralph's in Indian Wells. And it took a while, but the data convinced them at some point. And they took the deal to Real Estate Committee and they're open and they're doing very well. Their concern was cannibalizing another store in the market. So it's a it's a success story example. None of these things happen overnight. None of them happen if you do nothing. And none of them happen unless you're sort of an out-of-the-box thinker. And that's partly what you're doing here as the City of Lake Forest. Not every city is doing what you're doing. City of Norwalk has been working on recruitment and and significant projects. $500 to $750 million of real estate development is going to come online soon. It's going to start construction and it's taken city manager and city council, in that case, seven or eight years. And those are brand-new projects that are going to come online. They're also going to take advantage of some value capture zoning and frankly, creating a tax increment district to capture the value that gets created from that private investment. Two big developers are building a lot of stuff there. So that's a different example of recruitment services. And then business incentive programs. You know, City of Carson is an example of a matching program that they did for facade improvements and tenant improvements where you, a city can go side-to-side with a landlord who's trying to keep their storefronts updated and keep the leasing efforts strong. So I won't belabor some of this, but value capture zoning, again, you've done some of that by doing a mixed-use overlay. But these are examples of where that's been successful. And then tax increment financing, I I touched on, there's probably 30, 30-plus, 35 EIFDs in California now, give or take. So you've got counties and cities partnering to lever the tax increment that gets created. Here's a list of those jurisdictions, a partial list. And then I'll wrap up by saying that what we did is we kind of looked at categorically a few of your centers. So here's Foothill Ranch, El Toro Auto, and Rockfield. We kind of put them in the reimagine or redevelop category. When the theater went out to market, there's a mixed-use overlay on it. The question in my mind was, will you get a blended use or mixed-use developer that might come and try to redevelop that with residential or not? And I think there's some interest to do that. In that case, I'm not sure it's going to go that direction, but it's a big vacancy with an opportunity for redevelopment. So the focus there is really business attraction and expansion. And of course, knowing what the CCNRs say. CCNRs are these documents that tie all the properties together, they're complicated. But understanding how that can be unraveled, if it can, is another part of how the retail world works. They get, there's some complexity to it. So these are the centers that we put into that category. And then supporting and promoting, you know, promoting some of the centers, shops at Home Depot, Foothill Plaza, Sycamore Plaza, Grocery Outlet, Aspen, Forest Plaza. It's using some of the bear strategies that we talked about, but also maybe addressing some of the visual and facade upgrades that might benefit these centers. Maybe they're older. And so we plotted those as well. And then lastly, the kind of monitor and maintain, because you've got a lot of stability in the majority of these centers. And really, like I said before, it's not always just business attraction, but it's also business retention. Making sure we hang on to the anchors and the businesses, small businesses, that are doing well, that are hanging in there because it's it's a, you know, it's a tough economy, if you will, based on the cost of living and inflation. And so folks are trying to figure out how they can spend nine bucks on a dozen eggs or buy a chicken. Here's your mixed-use overlay. And like I say, I think the goal there is to try to promote the fact that you have some zoning that would allow residential to be built in addition to the retail for a blend of uses. I think those are good opportunities, the market just has to be there. And then wrapping it up, you know, we think the focus should be on, again, the business attraction, expansion, and retention, tracking the ownerships, tracking what's going on. Even the vacancy report that we presented tonight has data from November, December, and things are already changing in the marketplace. So maybe it's a quarterly view on your part of the the status of things. Attending some of the conferences, I think, can be beneficial because, again, you're seeing what's happening, you're seeing who's growing. Thing that I do when I go to the conferences, I get educated. I listen to see who's growing. And at one of the conferences I was just at, you know, 25 retailers came on a stage, they had three minutes. And they told the audience, which was about 400 people in of real estate professionals, retail professionals, they all stood up and said, hey, this is what we're doing, this is how we're growing, we want to be 2,000 feet, 10,000 feet, 50,000 feet. Here's who our brokers are, bring us deals. Well, I'm there listening and trying to get educated because I want to understand who's growing and what are their formats? Drive-throughs are very popular right now. You know, medical is pretty popular right now. Health and wellness is very popular right now. These are critical themes that the market, as it continues to change on a dynamic basis, is important to stay abreast of. Otherwise, I think you're just shooting in the dark. So promoting some of those centers and some of the mixed-use zoning, you know, we think is also important. One thing I want to just say that what was interesting is I was just looking at some of the data that we used, again, back to using Placer AI. There were three centers that I found really interesting. One was the Angelo's Burgers, which is on El Toro. And we saw this, it just was fascinating to me, this incredible spike in visits because of that burger establishment taking over, I think, of Vacated Carl's Jr. And it was just one example of how the data can tell you the story. The 10,000 in 2023, and that was before the Aldi opened. So I saw this incredible spike. Another example that I want to give on why data is important, I could have said this earlier, but I figured I'd wrap it up, is the Grocery Outlet Center. It never really tanked during COVID. The visit activity of people who were coming there, even during the pandemic, remained, actually increased relative to pre-pandemic levels, which I found fascinating. Anecdotally, my wife loves Grocery Outlet because they were selling organic eggs during the pandemic. And I don't know where you find those offerings, but Grocery Outlet was bringing product to the market. That's why I found that so interesting and fascinating, both personally and professionally. And then another center was just flatlined during during COVID. Ironically, it was the Stater Brothers. So you have a grocery store just up the street from Grocery Outlet, and it didn't do much during COVID. The activity stayed basically flat. It didn't go down and it didn't go up. But I think that kind of knowledge and information is valuable to utilize and leverage on on a past, present, and go-forward basis. So I'll I'll stop there. I think there's some next steps. I mean, something that we say here is looking for feedback from you all, and we've given you some of this information in these different workshops. You know, I think the deliverable is is pretty much in your hands. And then focusing on implementation. So I think at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Adrian, who also wants to talk about, from the staff's perspective, some go-forward next steps. So thank you very much, and we're available for questions.
You'll stay for some questions after?
Yeah, I'm here.
Adrian, it's all yours.
Thank you, Ken. Mayor, members of the City Council. So I'm here to discuss the city's next steps based on the retail market analysis. Staff initiated the following programs and services as strategic plan items for the City Council's consideration. These will be presented to the City Council during the April 29th City Council Budget Workshop. Some of these strategic initiatives include streamlining business startup support, which is essentially creating a one-stop shop that would offer clear guidance, resources, and support on the process of opening up a business here in Lake Forest. We're also discussing hiring a broker for retail recruitment. This would essentially build on the shopping center analysis by procuring a broker to enhance the success and revitalization of specific commercial centers and assist with retail recruitment. The selected broker could work directly for the city to identify, attract, and secure high-quality tenants, which align with the city's economic goals. And lastly, we'd like to discuss business attraction marketing. And lastly, would like to discuss business attraction marketing. This marketing campaign would leverage the branding strategy developed by the city's consultant to create an impactful marketing material. That showcases why Lake Forest is an ideal place for business. Additionally, the city would attend ICSC conference in May of twenty twenty six, where we would host a booth designated with branding promotional materials. And I would like to say that staff is intending on attending the May twenty twenty five ICSC conference to kind of get a lay of the land. And figure out what will make a successful booth. That concludes our presentation and staff and Cosmon are here for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'm bringing it back to council. Do we have any questions? Councilman Servo.
Thank you, mayor. A few questions here. Thanks for the presentation, Ken and Adrian. One thing, some of the things are kind of current today. Are you hearing any pushback about tariffs and what is that delaying decisions for making acquisitions of properties?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's being used at the moment in my, in my sense, a little bit anecdotally. I think that there's a real cost that's going to affect certain goods that are going to be brought in. We've already been facing some inflationary, you know, factors that hasn't helped, labor costs, cost of goods sold. So yeah, and I think anecdotally, there, there can be and there, there, there could be an impact. The development business, the new construction business, the cost of materials is already at a place, quite frankly. That has made a lot of new investment infeasible, just being very honest. You don't see a lot of new development. I mean, you know, I always use the Laguna Hills Mall as an example, I'm sorry, but fifty unit an acre multifamily residential doesn't pencil today. It's, it's nobody's fault. It's a function of the market cost. That's not a tariff issue. That's a pre tariff issue. And so we have other issues of fundamental real estate development feasibility that we're all kind of grappling with. So maybe the tariff will be, will make it incrementally more difficult. But I'm worried about pre tariff for that matter and what pencils and what works today. Frankly, the solution for high density residential, just to touch on that further, is low density residential. And the irony of that is that the townhomes and the attached and the single families, if you will. Twenty two units an acre, not fifty units an acre. That has more financial feasibility today in the marketplace. And so we think a lot about how is residential going to get built? How is new retail going to get built? Again, you have a pretty mature city and a pretty mature stock. So this is not about, you've got a green field, you know, that's got to get built and the tariffs are going to put a pause or a halt on that per se.
Okay, moving to some real life examples. Let's say the last ten businesses that have moved into Lake Forest, do, one, do we poll them for, hey, why did you decide on us? So we can use that perhaps as testimonials for other businesses. Secondly, out of those ten businesses that have come to us, did they find us? Did they do this research that the demographics on their own? Or did they come to us interested and we presented this data that helped ultimately convince them? What, what's the bigger percentage of that?
Well, frankly, if it's, if it's a question of surveying those, I think it's a brilliant idea. I really do, because I think having a conversation with folks to say, why did you come here? Why did you open here? You know, what is it? Is it that the demographic? Here's some of the reasons why, by the way. The demographics of your city fit our criteria. Okay? We don't have a location within your particular trade area. And remember, cities are a certain boundary. The trade area, which might be a different shape or a circle, it's usually not a circle, but retailers look at circles, one mile, three mile, five mile radius. They want to know how many people are there and what their incomes are. And so they're going to say, hey, I really like this location because I get a five mile radius and my other store is over here in a different city. And it has a five mile radius. And so this allows us to, just like Sprouts went to Indian Wells and didn't cannibalize what they were doing in La Quinta. It's the same example. You might have somebody in Liso Viejo that has their five mile ring, but they come to Lake Forest and they go, hey, I can leverage the customer who might know my brand, restaurant or retailer. And I get to capture this trade area, which may or may not include your city, outside your city boundary. So I think the notion of a survey is a good idea. Now retailers, small businesses, you know, it's, it's tough to open a new business. They have an idea, they have a dream, they have a product that they think can work. The more national retailers and those chains, they're pretty sophisticated in how they evaluate trade areas. And it's what I just described. Usually it's not just a circle. It's a freeway that creates a barrier. It's the two forty one, it's the five. It's okay, what happens on that part of South Orange County or what have you? How do I compete with Irvine Spectrum? How do I compete with other restaurants or retailers with cities next door? And so they, they're pretty scientific about how they look at trade areas. And they make those business decisions, corporate business decisions, not frivolously. So I still think a survey is, is a good idea because I think you could learn that much more about why they made that decision.
Okay, well, I like the proactive approach, taking this data and the metrics and then going after businesses and say, you know, here are some of the top reasons why our businesses come here and enjoy Lake Forest. It matches up to what we found with yours. So I'm just not certain I've seen that kind of activity. And then conversely, with our residents, I mean, my wife, you know, nables up my ear all the time. Why don't we have a TJ Maxx? Why don't we have this restaurant? Why don't we have this and that? Do we receive input from our residents that helps us say, maybe we should reach out proactively to these types of businesses? This is what the residents want here that will support those businesses?
It does, in so much as the survey of the businesses and why did you come here could be enlightening the survey of your community. I know you've done that. You did that not that long ago. And one thing I thought I saw in the survey results was, we need more restaurants. So, and, and a lot of people are saying that because I think we are clearly as a society, in my, my estimation, not eating at home like we used to because of time and convenience. And we're going a lot, going out a lot more to eat. Now, it's getting more expensive. So listen, we're making decisions now also on what is a fast food meal costs us? What is a fast casual meal costs us? What is a sit down meal costs us? So those things are all getting, are taken into consideration. But when your residents do a survey and they say, hey, this is what we think is missing. I was just with a city, had been on the run and traveling and with different cities about different things. And someone just told us, you can't buy clothing in my, in the, in the city. And the tricky part of that is so much of that is being done online. And yet, the TJ Maxxes and the Rosses of the world and the Burlington's of the world are doing pretty good. They're doing pretty good because they're a brick and mortar format that people do strive for and do support. And generally, they're pretty successful when they open.
Okay, one final question. You kind of touched on technology and some of the tools. I'm in telecom technology and there's tools out there that will tag people. For example, if a restaurant has a group of cell phone numbers, they can, you know, message out a promotion for a percent discount off. Or we're having some kind of a special event. And so using those kind of tools, is that something in the mix that we're considering in terms of how we might be able to engage the community with businesses to help drive revenue?
I, I think you should absolutely do that. I mean, the retailers have to help themselves, but cities can layer onto that by using certain technologies. Whether it's social media technologies or partnering with some of those businesses to do a combined effort. I think you guys have a, a program, the buy one, get one program, which is probably, and I hope marketed in a way that's through technology. Because when you can promote those things, it can really attract taste of Lake Forest. You're promoting those things using technologies and I think you're synergizing with the businesses accordingly. That's, that gets back to this relationship and partnership business that I think cities can be in. You know, landlords of retail shopping centers are like partners. They're like retailers themselves. Now, that's their job, right? Because they're in the risk business, but they literally have to understand merchandising of each of their stores. You can't probably get that granular at the city level, but as granular as you can get, you know, budget. Notwithstanding or the budget considerations for how much time that takes, only helps yourself in the, in the world of education and business attraction.
Okay, well, I'm encouraged that we're making this investment to gather this data, come up with strategies that are going to help attract businesses, put those into place. And be the above and beyond type of a city for businesses over other locations. So I'm thankful that we got this report and we've got more information and more activity to go on with that. So thank you for that feedback.
Thank you.
Councilman Teddermer.
Thank you, mayor. First of all, thank you for the presentations. I appreciate it. So there was talk about the survey in general that we do, as well as the work you've done. And they do intersect because I believe, and I'm doing this from memory, that normally over the last several surveys, the top line answer when people were asked in an open question, what would you like the city to do? The most common answer was, I can't think of anything. Which is a great answer because that means they're generally content. This time, we actually saw a difference and it was, as you referenced, the idea that they wanted more restaurants and things like that. So I think that's certainly a call to action in my judgment that the community has an ask. I will say that the, the item that we used to be number one has fallen to number two. So the second most popular answer is I can't think of anything. So we're still in relatively good shape. Having said that though, there, this intersection between what you're bringing forward, along with the community's desire, I think is important. And I shared recently at a public meeting that this is one of the few things we do where it is somewhat competitive. You know, we do our streets, they do their streets and whatnot. But here we are actually in a professional way, competing with our neighboring cities to try and attract businesses to come here versus two miles that way or two miles that way. And so I think it's important that we do make those efforts to present ourselves to the business sector. And restaurants and all the rest and say, here's who we are and here's what we bring. And I think we have a great story to tell, not only the improvements and how we've grown since nineteen ninety one and, and what, and who we are and what we are. But I think also the, the impressive list of businesses that are here, which I think makes a statement about Lake Forest as well. So I know there was talk about staff working and bringing some items back and for future consideration. And this is someplace I certainly would be prepared to lean in and help. I think that I would make a suggestion to staff for consideration and that is to put together maybe, I'll call it a three year plan, for lack of a better term. To sort of outline the steps we could take over maybe that period in a budget, which I know doesn't necessarily correspond to three year budgets. But at least put together sort of a plan on how we would like to do this, but also consider ways to measure results. Because if we can do that, then we make the argument to keep doing that or more. If we can see the feedback loop, it's working, we are actually getting businesses to show up. So I appreciate Councilmember Servo's idea about polling past businesses, but also engaging and finding out more about what would it take to get businesses to come here. And, but, but creating sort of a small business model around what can we do to do more and how is that bearing fruit for the city? Because obviously, economic development is an important thing that we do. And if we can do more of it in a smart way and effective, cost effective way, then I think it'd be a great thing to do for the city. So I would encourage city staff to look at a multi year plan and steps to take incrementally for, for the council to consider at the right time. Thank you.
If I could just add to that, Councilman, you know, the, the length of time that it does take sometimes to do this business attraction. Again, also making sure that business retention is an important thing because you've got a mature market. But on the business attraction side of life, it does take time. And I know that Adrian had mentioned attending the ICSC conference in Vegas. I mean, it's an overwhelming conference, but it is the retail conference. It's where you get educated. There's twenty five thousand folks that go. But I want to give a different example on a smaller conference. There's a small city in northern, northern California that went to a conference with about a thousand folks in northern Cal. And ended up meeting with a hotel, the, the biggest hotel chain in the world. And they said, you know, we're doing an outdoor collection and we're looking for outdoor environments that can be recreational, et cetera. This city is like the waterfall capital of wherever you want to call it, the world, the, the country. And they have a airstream boutique hotel, just as an example. And the largest hotel chain in the world said, I want to brand that airstream cabin boutique resort in this small city in Siskiyou County. And if you're not there in this world of getting educated and meeting folks and trying to learn and trying to connect some of the dots, you don't have that opportunity. And that's just a recent little mini success story of what it, of what some of this is. This is business, again, back to the same business attraction, expansion, retention. And it's, the deal's not done, but it was a fascinating connection that if, but for their attendance at that conference and having some meetings with folks, you wouldn't have that connection. So just a, a small example of how being proactive matters.
Councilman, you.
Thank you so much for the presentation here. It highlights our city's strengths and weaknesses. And I look at Co Stars regularly and I noticed several bucks, as you mentioned, already off the market. So it's good news there. And also to the best of my knowledge, we have more than a dozen restaurants open in recent months or going to be open within the next few months. I think there's a lot of attractions because our city is in a good location. But at the same time, I want to highlight some weakness there is, you probably can give a little more professional insight that. I think our city's overall average rent is a comparable lower than city or area. And I think our branding will probably help that part in the future. And continually attract more businesses and retail to our city. And another question I want to ask here is, what do you think about the hotel sectors in our city? Because I think our TOT tax is really good, but we still have the space to expand into another few spots in our city. And do you have any opinion on that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll address the hotel sector for a second. I was making a reference to that particular hotel chain and then ICSC Vegas. Interestingly enough, I'm meeting with all the hotel chains, if you will. I mean, the biggest ones, you know, I have a meeting with Hyatt, Hilton, Marriott, IHG. They're all open for business. They're all interested in trying to figure out how they can compete in a particular niche. Because Marriott is an example, has thirty four brands. Like, well, that's a lot of brands. But that means there's a niche that, that can be multiple Marriott hotels, if you will, right within one market. Same with Hyatt, same with Hilton, same with IHG. So they're pretty active. They were majorly affected during the pandemic. But the leisure traveler came back in a way that, that exceeded pre pandemic levels, quite frankly, because I think the leisure travel. The business traveler has changed their, their habits. But you know what it's done? It's created a strength in the extended stay format. And so sure enough, one of the big brands created yet another, you know, layer that was trying to take advantage of the extended stay. Because as we travel for business, we're doing it differently, right? We're doing Zoom meetings, we're working from home, which is a whole nother concept because I didn't even talk about housing as economic development. Well, that's because we're doing a lot of things from the roofs, underneath the roofs of our homes, right? We're shopping and we're working. But when we go travel for business, we may be staying a little longer and these extended stay formats are trying to capture that audience. So I think it is to say that the hotel industry is pretty robust right now. Let me just be honest though, to build a hotel is a very expensive proposition. And back to the cost of construction, it's not helping new hotels get built. My understanding is your Spring Hill Suites i- in, in this is doing very well. And so that's great. So the question is what niche might be missing from any one of those brands? Because those are all top brands. And I would argue that they could probably figure out yet another brand amongst all those. That's, that's probably fifty to seventy five different hotels that could niche into the city of Lake Forest. I mean, I can tell you that, that it should be public knowledge that the site plan, if you will, the entitlement for the Laguna Hills Mall clearly has a hotel on it. And that's because there's, there's interest. So I think there's some room there. You have about eight percent of your, of your general fund that comes from that tax. The, the city average in California is six to eight percent, you know, so you're, you're there. You're not overweight from a TOT perspective, but it is a strong generator of revenue for general funds. And then as to the rent differential, you know, the bottom line is Irvine's going to have higher rent. LA is going to have higher rent. San Francisco is going to have higher rent than that. You know, there's going to be a relative scale, I think, to the, to the rent. Really, I think if you look at Irvine, yeah, it struck competition because Irvine Spectrum is basically literally next door and it's attracting a lot of folks. And it's been one of the most successful retail centers. It was the most successful retail. It was the most successful retail center. When we did some of the place information, we came and spoke to your city a couple of different times out of all the centers in a pandemic, pre- and post-pandemic data collection. So we looked at South Coast Plaza, we looked at Irvine Spectrum, we looked at Fashion Island. And Irvine Spectrum was the one that really folks kept going to. It was outdoors, it's lifestyle, it's theoretically interesting, you know, and experiential. And I think that's why their rents are probably higher. You know, Irvine's got other things. They have a university, they have an airport. There's reasons why that rent's going to be higher.
Thank you. I mean, I think hotel and retail goes hand to hand.
I agree.
One thing I noticed is in the Central and South County, one of the things missing in hospitality sector is a mid-brand luxury brand like Marriott Autograph Collection, Ohio Centric. I hope, you know, some brand and some developer comes to our city to feel those voices. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm always enlightened when Cosmo gives us a report or some statistics. Great ideas. I love the bear strategy. I think that we have an all-star team with Adrian and Hope as our economic development team. And so I'm looking forward to getting together with you. And just for sake of time, I'll send you some email questions I have, just for follow-up. Madam City Clerk, do we have any from the public to speak?
We do have one speaker on this item, and that's Andrew O'Connor.
Thank you for your presentation. Thanks for the work you do to make us more economically. You know, people don't realize the importance that we have is business friendliness. And so your insight is very valuable to us. So thank you, as always.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council.
Happy Easter. Thank you.
And happy Easter to you, too.
Thank you, sir. God bless.
Andrew O'Connor, Foothill Ranch. Cosmo made a very professional presentation. Unfortunately, I'm going to poke some holes in it. When you talk about Cineplex, do you know they're already pulling plans to demolish it? And a warehouse club is going to go in there? He never mentioned that. He never mentioned the freeway corridor that the Chase property is going to change into a hotel. You're going to level Arby's, you're going to level the pub. He never talked about that and the impact on El Toro Road. Mr. Serbo, remember when you laughed at me when I said the closed 99 cent store? I understand the landlord wanted to protect his building from vandalism, and he put up wood. And I suggested, you know, you talk to the landlord to paint it the same beige? And you literally laughed in my face about it, said it was stupid. Well, go over and look at it, Mr. Serbo and all of you. And Cosmo, go look at that closed building. It looks like a ghetto with that wood up there. I merely asked, can you paint it? And I got laughed at. So you're talking about you want to bring in new tenants so they can look at it? I see Cosmo as a jolly green giant. They're standing here, and a lot of things have happened. Who would have thought that Denny's would close? Denny's is an institution in America. It closed. And what's it going to be replaced by? A Chinese lobster house called Fantasy, and they can't even spell the word fantasy right. It's the biggest joke in social media, okay? Frank's Bistro is opening up. They're both Chinese, which is fine. The demographics of our community have changed. The Meadows, 650 homes, it's all Chinese, okay? The demographics have changed. He never mentioned that in his report, okay? Sit-down restaurants have vanished. Look at the Claim Jumper in Mission Viejo. It got leveled, but it's busier than hell with what? A Chick-fil-A one mile away from the Foothill Ranch. So if you want to see Bee Hives at night, just look at Chick-fil-A, Raising Canes, In-N-Out Burger. The lines going there are strong. He never mentioned the freeway corridor and what Caltrans and OCTA is going to do with the I-5 southbound. If they do a flyover, you can kiss the freeway corridor goodbye. And the demographics is going to happen, the dynamics is going to happen there. Mr. Tedamer says, we need another survey. Holy smokes, dude, we just did True North for $140,000, and you want another survey? That's why I call you the Five Stooges up there. You're the Five Stooges. You want another survey? Look at the True North. I guess you haven't read it. And if you want a cheap one, do Survey Monkey, okay? Why don't you go out and walk the community instead of sitting up there
Thank you for your comments.
and wanting surveys and consultants? The Five Stooges.
And I, Cosmo, I forgot to thank you. I have not visited Angelo's hamburger joint on El Toro Road and seen the uptick on the traffic there. I'm going to have to go try a hamburger there. So it wasn't a drive-through, so you talked about the value of drive-through. That's why I didn't go by, because I'm always racing home. But I'm going to do it because of you. Thank you for that. That brings us to item number 13. This will be a receive-and-file presentation, so there's no further action needed for this. Madam City Clerk, please read the title for 13.
Thank you, Mayor. The title is Draft Fiscal Year 2025-2030 CDPG Five-Year Consolidated Plan and Draft Fiscal Year 2025-26 Expenditure Plan.
Madam City Manager, please introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to have our Economic Development Manager, Adrian Gralhava, give a presentation on our Community Development Block Grant.
Thank you, City Manager Rose. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you for consideration is the Draft Five-Year Consolidated Plan and the Draft 2025-26 Expenditure Plan. Staff will return at the next City Council meeting on May 6th for adoption of the CDPG Five-Year Con Plan and Fiscal Year 2526 Annual Action Plan. The Con Plan is designed to help agencies assess affordable housing and community development needs. The process serves as the framework for a community-wide dialogue to identify priorities that align and focus funding from the CDPG program. The plan ultimately offers a broad range of potential programs and services, which can be included in the preceding five annual action plans. The city's overall objective for the CBG program mirrors HUD's program objective, which is to create viable communities by providing decent housing, a suitable living environment, and economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. The following Con Plan goals have been established based on the consultation and analysis process. These goals are identical to the current Con Plan goals. The Annual Action Plan outlines how CDPG funding will be spent to address the goals and objectives identified in the Con Plan. The Draft Expenditure Plan, which is for your review this evening, will drive the Annual Action Plan. The Draft Expenditure Plan process, pardon me, the Draft Expenditure Plan proposes how CDPG funds for fiscal year 2526 will be spent. It's important to note that HUD has not announced 2025 grant allocations as of this time. There are funding caps which limit the amount of money that can be allocated to administration and public services. The caps are 20% of the annual grant for administration and 15% for public services. Staff anticipates a total budget of $781,937,000 for next fiscal year. Staff has been informed by HUD it intends to announce the allocations on or around May 15th of 2025. As mentioned on the other slide, HUD has not announced 2025 grant allocations. And for this reason, staff intends to adjust allocations by a percentage based on the final 2025 grant. The table on screen shows the proposed allocations for the Fiscal Year 2526 Annual Action Plan. Staff is recommending to allocate $50,000 to the Boost Program. The Boost Program aims to help in-home child daycare providers within Lake Forest. Funds would be used to cover part of the salaries and benefits for staff members, as well as healthcare and payroll taxes. This is the first time the city's received an application for these services. The following slide details the Boost Program. Staff is proposing to allocate the maximum amount to public services, which is capped at 15% of the fiscal year 2526 grant. A future slide will get into the service provider breakdown. Staff is also proposing to allocate the maximum amount to administration, which is capped at 20% of the fiscal year 2526 grant. And lastly, remaining funds would be allocated to ADA ramps and the Housing Rehabilitation Loan and Paint Grant Programs. The Boost Program was launched in 2022 with the purpose of strengthening local childcare providers by offering free business and technical support. Upwards Inc. has successfully secured and effectively utilized CDPG funding from other agencies, including Escondido, Garden Grove, Palo Alto, and Tustin in California, and most recently Bellevue in Washington State. Upwards' initial request was for $104,000 to assist 13 Lake Forest-based daycare facilities. As this is the first time Upwards requested funds, staff is recommending to provide approximately half of the funding request, totaling $50,000, to ensure the program meets all requirements for use of federal funds. Funds would be used to cover part of the salaries and benefits for staff members, as well as healthcare and payroll taxes. Staff received applications from six nonprofit organizations. The Boys and Girls Club, although we're not recipients of our CDPG funding this last year, have previously been awarded CDPG funds. The remaining agencies were each awarded CDPG funds last fiscal year and are meeting all CDPG requirements. Funding recommendations are based on prior year accomplishments, services provided, and prior year allocation. As you can see from this slide, 44% of CDPG funds are proposed to be allocated for housing improvements, then 29% to ADA ramps, 12% to administration, 9% to subrecipients, and 6% to the Boost Program. At this time, staff recommends the City Council review and provide comment on the Draft Fiscal Year 252030 Con Plan and Draft Fiscal Year 2526 Expenditure Plan. Staff and Brandy Adair, CDPG consultant, are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Councilman Tedamer.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm in support of the, what's the right term here? The public service grant recommendations. I'm fine with that. The one I do have some concerns around is Boost. In talking to staff, as I understand it, what's different about this is that everything else we've done in the public sector side has been to 501(c)(3)'s, I think. This one is a private enterprise. It's a private business. So that's a divergence, and this is new this year, the first time we've seen this. But that's a divergence which concerns me. I personally would like to see the funds go to 501(c)(3)'s to fulfill the mission. So this gives me some concerns around it. I would be curious to see if staff can find a way to accomplish this through another means, through possibly a 501(c)(3). This sort of cracks open a door that says that we will start to fund private business to do things. And maybe we're okay with that, but again, I have reservations about that. And this does open a door which maybe gets closed, maybe it doesn't. But maybe it also becomes much more popular for people to say, I can do something, and so provide me the money. So I have reservations about it. I'm not sure I can support it at this point. So I'm just putting it out there for my colleagues. You're just looking for general input, I think, at this point. So that's my general input. I know we'll be bringing it back later for consideration. But I guess I would just ask staff to see if this can be done through a 501(c)(3), possibly, which would give me the comfort that I would seek. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Councilman, you.
Thank you, Mayor. I also echo the concern of Councilmember Tedamer regarding the Boost Program. And this is going to be the first time we award direct subsidy to private enterprise. And my understanding is we have other licensed childcare business in City of Lake Forest, and they can potentially result in an unlabelled playing field in the private sector. And I think we may just recommend to table this item here to have a little more time to study and digest the detail of this program and see what we can do with this item, maybe in the second meeting of May.
So we do need to finalize our draft Con Plan and draft Annual Action Plan by the May 6th City Council meeting, because it's due to HUD on May 15th of this year. And to Councilmember Tedamer's point and Councilmember Yuz's point, we did release a NOFA, Notice of Funding Availability, for these CDPG dollars. And that NOFA window has closed. So at this point in time, we would not be able to go back out to the market and search for a 501(c)(3) nonprofit to essentially do some of these services. So I would probably recommend that that effort would be made the next fiscal year Annual Action Plan. For this fiscal year, if the City Council ultimately decides not to fund the Boost Program, we would probably reallocate those funds in a CIP project.
What do you think, Mark?
Well, this is just for discussion purposes anyway. We're going to be discussing this more.
Yeah. I think let's just table this item here. We will work with the staff and probably come up with something by the next council meeting.
Mayor, if I may? Thank you. So to the City Manager, I guess I'm looking for some direction here because this is a general discussion, but now we're here, you need specific, specific direction. So help me with what we're looking for tonight.
I think what we need tonight is a general sense of whether you want us to make a change to the allocations because we do need to present a final product at your next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, we'll continue discussion. Councilman Serbo.
Quickly, thank you, Mayor. Along that line about allocations, I understand the 15% limit in terms of those nonprofit organizations. And I think you touched on, how do we value what they ask for, what they actually get, and come up with that mix? Because I'm familiar with some of these folks. And of course, I may have a bias in terms of like, you know, Family Assistance Ministries, for example. I have a good friend who works there, and I know the work that they do. And it seems like, you know, they asked for 20, they got 10, they've had 12,300 before. Reasons for the drops or the ups on some of these organizations?
So one of the big reasons why majority of these allocations have decreased from the current grant year allocations is due to the fact that we have a new application, the Boys and Girls Club. And they're proposing to operate an after-school program. None of the current service providers operate any sort of after-school programs. Let's see, Families Forward, Family Assistance Ministries, and South County Outreach, they all offer services to families that are experiencing hardship. So because we have three different agencies that are kind of focused on that aspect, we tried to divvy everything up so it remains somewhat close to what their current fiscal year grant is because a lot of these agencies do rely on CDPG funding. So we don't want to one year give them a high number, say a $15,000 allocation. Then the next year, it drops down to $5,000. So staff, what we did was, we kind of looked at what the prior year allocation was, what the goals were in that prior year, what they actually were able to accomplish in that prior year, and then base our allocation and try and get it as close to the current grant as possible. If the City Council does have direction to move some of these numbers around, staff certainly can look into that, and we would appreciate any input the council has at this time.
Okay, I was just more interested, I guess, in how the allocations change. So thanks for that explanation. At this point, I'm not interested in really having a debate about we should give this one more than this one less. So I think it's fine the way it is. I just wanted to kind of understand the process. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So my two cents is the Boost, is that's Upwards, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not, is that something that would be giving to in-house after-school or childcare? Or is it like monasteries? What were you talking like?
So it's all in-home child daycare facilities. The way the program works is, the Boost Program has, pardon me, give me one quick second.
Do we know how many providers of that there are in Lake Forest?
So I believe they identified over 60 in-home daycare facilities.
And they're licensed?
Yes, they're all licensed. So Boost Program and their application identified Upwards of 50 in-home daycares in City of Lake Forest. And they specifically were looking at targeting a total of 13 with the $104,000 request that they had in. The Boost Program does remove some of the administrative burden on these child in-home daycares, such as management software. They have software which will automate billing and enrollment. They also help daycare facilities with marketing materials, translation services, and other program supplies. So what the Boost Program aims to do is go in and really just kind of act as a crutch for these in-home daycare facilities to prosper and really focus on the business, rather than kind of some of these administrative burdens that businesses have to encounter.
So some of the other cities you say that, and actually use Upwards, is Tustin. So some of the other cities you say that, and actually use Upwards, is Tustin, or you read off some of the other cities?
Tustin, Garden Grove, Palo Alto, Escondido, and a handful others.
I'm somewhat concerned, you know, just because of the slippery slope of that, because these are strictly basically for-profit businesses. People start these up for profit businesses, and so I'm not, you know, we'll bring you back for future discussion, but I mean, or I'll talk to you offline. I think that there's some questions from three councilmen here about that. So I think that we need to be better informed about that and the way, the direction we are going with that, because that is kind of new to us, and it kind of like Upwards, and so I didn't really know what it was. And so, does that, would that include the Montessori's that actually are the Britton-Morder daycares that we have in the City of Lake Forest?
It would not. This is strictly, excuse me, this is strictly targeting low and moderate in-home daycare facilities, pardon me. It's strictly targeting in-home daycare facilities whose owners are of low and moderate income.
All right, well, I don't see any other questions. Do we have any public comments for this?
Scott, one more here. So Adrian, basically what they're talking about is they want to subsidize those CADSS defined home operator, those mom-and-pop shop, they themselves is low-income, and they operate strictly in-house residential daycare up to six kit, right?
That is correct.
Okay. I think I'm, I need more information to consider this item here.
Do you need, Mr. City Manager, do we need anything further on that one?
Well, we need to finalize this plan. So what I would suggest is you appoint two people to an ad hoc to work with staff on finalizing this plan so we can present it to you for adoption at your second meeting in May council meeting?
First.
First meeting in May, so at your next council meeting. I think that, so two of you could do a deep dive on it and then make a recommendation when we meet again.
Yeah, I'd like to put, I would like Councilman Teddermer and Councilman Yuz, if they'd be willing to serve on that.
Yes, Mayor.
Agreed? Okay. I'm just, and I'll be informed, I'd like to meet with you offline and get more information on that. I'm not jumping up and down about it, but I need more information. Thank you. You may.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I'm not opposed to what they're trying to accomplish. I think it's a noble cause. I would prefer it be done through some other means than the for-profit sector, just because I think it's a, it's a big step outside what we have done historically, and it would just give me a little bit of peace of mind. I'd be curious to know, obviously not for this cycle, but whether any of the current entities that we work with might consider exploring somehow getting into that space. So, for consideration.
And just our legal councils here, if we were to participate with an in-home operator and something happened tragic at that home or an accident, would we be somewhat, we could be liable for that because we're the big pockets if we contribute to that?
Well, Mayor and Council, I'm aware that most of these, you know, CDBG recipients enter into an agreement with the city in which these funds are released and have disclaimers and indemnification and those type of things. And so certainly, from a legal perspective, we would contract that to those, you know, providers.
Yeah, but my question here is, I'm sorry, Mayor, is they will enter the contract and identify us, but as a very low-income, a low-income business, they home, a home mom-and-pop business, they won't have the ability, capacity to identify the city, right?
In terms of risk management, certainly we always require, you know, insurance to back up the indemnity clauses, and if they can't provide that, then that would be a consideration, a risk consideration for the city.
Thank you. Adrian, if you could talk to our ad hoc and set something up for that, and I'll get together with you afterwards. And that is the actions we needed for tonight for that item. We're good?
Mayor and members of the City Council, I would just like to clarify that we would not be entering into agreements with these specific in-home daycare facilities. We would be entering into an agreement with Upwards Care Inc., which is the for-profit business that we've been discussing this evening. So in case those are some major concerns, just kind of want to clarify, it would be with the agency itself, not the in-home child daycares.
So again, my concern is that it's for-profit, and this is money that we're supposed to be using out to utilize to help our community for 501(c)(3)'s. So we'll discuss that further, but that brings us to item number 14, if we're done with that. Madam City Clerk, if you'd like to read the title.
Yes, the title of item number 14 is Asset Management Plan Update.
Okay, Mayor, we have a presentation. Okay, no problem. We have a presentation by Fana Shrego. She is our finance analyst, and she will provide an update on our asset management system.
It looks like we're online already, so you're in good hands now.
I know, someone else, someone else did the hard work for me. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Voits, Councilmembers. Fana Shrego, Finance Analyst, here to present an update on the city asset management plan. So to start off with a brief background, in February 2022, the City Council approved a professional services agreement with Kayuga Solutions to perform a comprehensive inventory and condition assessment of all the city-owned infrastructure. Kayuga's assessment was completed in May of 2023, and it was presented to the City Council during the budget workshop. In that same year, as part of the city's biannual budget development process, the current financial management and budgetary policy was approved in June, which includes a risk-based reserve policy setting forth long-term financial strategy. Tonight, I present with you, to you, an update on the asset management plan to highlight how the plan supports our long-term financial planning, capital improvement budgeting, and infrastructure sustainability efforts. The overall purpose of the asset management plan is to serve as a foundational tool for long-term asset management while maintaining a desired level of municipal services citywide. The primary objectives of this plan include establishing a foundation for asset management in order to monitor, maintain, and improve asset conditions, to plan ahead for replacement and maintenance, and to efficiently allocate funding for long-term capital improvement planning. These objectives all lend themselves to key financial benefits that enhance our ability to make risk-based as well as data-driven budgeting decisions, to support strategic budget allocation, to help distinguish between long-term capital projects for the CIP and routine maintenance funded through the annual operating budget. It also supports long-term financial sustainability, shifting away from needs-based planning to a more data-informed approach. Now let's review what the city's assets are and what exactly the asset management plan includes. First, the plan evaluated over 73,000 assets, broken down into five categories, which include roadways such as guardrails, traffic signs, pedestrian ramps and streetlights, urban forestry, including all the 169 different tree types in the city, buildings, which include not only the buildings but the building sites and anything within the walls of the building, from the HVAC system to the sinks to the floor to the ceiling. It also included parks, the category of parks, which includes trash bins, lighting, picnic benches, and playground turf. And then drainage, that category includes assets such as storm drain pipes and catch basins. Next, a conditional rating was given to each asset, ranging from new or excellent to poor or failed. And lastly, each asset was given a risk prioritization, measuring, measured as high, medium, or low, based on the likelihood of failure and consequence of failure, which measures how likely an asset is to fail and how severe that impact would be if it does, which helps prioritize which assets need attention first. So what does a condition rating, a risk prioritization, mean, and how will it be applied to the city's infrastructure? To help explain the asset management plan, let's look at a house as an example. So you invest in a home, you protect the home by performing regular maintenance, you paint it, you have roof repairs, upgrading systems, which all add to a lower cost for the repairs overall. Deferring or waiting too long leads to costly repairs or disruptive repairs. Similarly, the asset management plan gives a city a structured way to care for its assets, preserving value, extending useful life, and ensuring sustainable, reliable public services. The asset management plan provides a citywide condition ratings that are illustrated here by the category, those five categories, which show the majority of our assets are in good to excellent condition, which means the city is starting from a very strong place. Knowing the overall condition of the city's assets allows us to focus reinvestment where it's most needed while protecting the assets already in good shape. Now let's look at the risk prioritization snapshot based on the asset condition and that likelihood of failure and consequence of failure formula to help prioritize projects. Here, you can see that approximately 16 million of the assets are at high risk, whereas the majority of all city assets are in low to medium risk. It's important to note that not all poor-conditioned assets require full replacement. Many can be repaired or rehabilitated cost-effectively. In fact, several projects address these high-priority repairs already, are already ongoing or slated to begin in the near future through the Public Works General Maintenance and the city's Capital Improvement Plan, including the sports park field lighting, which is currently ongoing, the sports park HVAC system, which is upcoming, the operational maintenance for playground resurfacing, that's an ongoing project as well, and the park trail rehabilitation is an example of an upcoming project. Now let's look at the citywide comprehensive asset risk management, which is also attached to the agenda report, and it illustrates a more in-depth analysis of the risk prioritization snapshot. What's important to see here is that overall, the high-risk assets are minimal in comparison to the good to excellent condition rating assets. So what are the city's next steps? Well, with the completed asset management plan, Public Works can integrate the plan as a tool to guide the 2025-2032 Capital Improvement Program development. Public Works, in collaboration with Finance, will monitor and update the asset conditions regularly to ensure the plan continues to reflect actual conditions and needs. And Finance will continue to support strategic planning and funding to align with this data-driven approach. This concludes my presentation. I am here, as well as the other members of the Finance team, to answer any questions.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Yeah, Councilman Teddermer.
So to staff, does the high-risk category, and maybe the high-risk category with a high risk of consequence, do I have the right term? Yeah. Does that inform anything differently about a reserve policy? We can dig deeper into this, maybe in an audit committee meeting, but I'm just generally speaking, am I, does that resonate with you at all, that that would be something we would think about? Because when I see high-risk, high degree of consequence suggests there's potentially some urgency around it?
Right. So that's giving us an indication that, you know, if we're completely going by this model, you would spend $16 million to make that red not be red, right? But what this is really showing us is that these are the areas we should be looking at, because according to the model, these are high-risk and these require immediate replacement. So that's where our field crews and our engineers go in and really take a look. And in several of these cases, you're gonna do a rehab and to put it into a better shape. It doesn't necessarily mean you're completely changing that out, but our reserves, yes, are matched to this number. So we're always using this to plan ahead, if that makes sense. So it's not a one-to-one relationship, I guess is what I'm saying, but it's to give you an indication of what you should be planning for and what your reserves should be able to handle in future years. Like, for example, we know we built all these buildings in the same year. So theoretically, in 30 years, we're gonna be replacing the roof of all of these buildings around the same time. And so in our financial model, we need to be planning for that expense. And so there was a chart, that was part of this, that showed, it was a bar chart that showed, you know, in some years the chart is lower, some years it's higher, because of the timing of when your assets need a replacement. And so there is a relationship, but it's not necessarily a one-to-one relationship, is what I'm trying to say. Because that high-risk area, right now it's showing 16 million, but realistically, it doesn't require completely changing that out and experiencing that $16 million investment. You might be doing a rehab program, so it's not a full change-out, and that would be enough to change the condition so it's no longer in that risk category, if that makes sense.
Well, it does, but then the $16 million, what does that reflect? Does that reflect a complete change?
Correct.
And so we're saying, we don't really have to do that, so it's not really, that number is a little bit...
Correct. That assumes you're gonna have to absolutely change out that, those assets, and that's not always the case.
Okay. Okay. Well, I guess just maybe the audit committee can tackle this at some point.
Yeah, we can delve into the details. I mean, that chart that she showed with all the, some of the red and all the green, you know, that's a chart only a city manager could love, right? Like, to me, that is like amazing. That's our level of service for our infrastructure. It is quite good. And so obviously, we want to make sure we keep those greens, but the model allows us to plan so that we're not caught off guard when we hit those times that we have to spend major money to change something from red into the green.
Right. No, I think it's great we're doing this. I'm really impressed with, you know, all that we're learning and how to prioritize. It just, your eyes are drawn to the red.
Oh, yeah.
And the numbers associated with it.
I realize that.
Right, so it's like, if that's a high priority and high risk of consequence...
Right.
...suggests there's some urgency associated with it, and is that the real dollar amount? Then that's, further fuels that.
Right. But let's keep in mind what some of that is. Some of that are, some of that stuff is signage. Some of it is, you know, relatively minor things, even though it's showing it's high-risk. It's not necessarily a bridge failure or, you know, it's much more dramatic on the slide than it is when you really get down to it.
It's the word consequence, I think, that grabbed my attention, to suggest there's some implication of urgency or importance to...
Right.
Like, don't sit on this one, you better take it...
Right. But, and it's also probability, too. But yeah, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll take that as a forecast of we have $16 million of improvements or fixing. So seeing nothing further here, do we have any public comments for this item?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
And that's, I'll receive a file then, and we've received the update. Madam City Clerk, item number 15.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 15 is Capital Improvement Plan Update.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers.
You get to clean up here, so...
I'm the closer.
Oh, you are, so let's hit a home run.
I'm here to provide an update on our capital improvement program. As we talked about before, we have a total of 70 projects that are currently budgeted and planned for a total budget of $36 million. 35 are from the 23/25 CIP, 33 were ongoing from previous and two were added mid-cycle. As usual, let's talk about the good news. We're gonna talk about projects we've completed in the last quarter. The Baker Ranch Dog Park, we completed the synthetic turf replacement, and we also removed a problematic landscape area between the two gates and installed a decorative paver in this area with a dog theme. We also completed the Pittsford Park gazebo renovation, which replaced the structure's roofing crossbeams, installed LED lighting, and repainted the structure. In summary, we've completed 33 projects in the current 23/25 CIP for a total of $17.8 million in investment in the city's infrastructure. Now let's talk about projects under construction. The Baker Tribeca Widening Project was awarded in February 2025 to All American Asphalt. They're currently going through the procurement phase for some of the long-lead items like signal poles, and we anticipate them being under construction later this summer. The Zone D asphalt repairs are nearing completion. They should be doing resurfacing on Kenyatta Road in the next couple of weeks to kind of fix up that, and that would wrap up that project. We're also working on completing the street name sign change. I'm sure you've seen this in a lot of neighborhoods. The street name signs have been changed, we've had a lot of good feedback on that. We're also working on three Lipton intersection projects, the Geronimo Road and Lake Forest Drive, Rancho Parkway and Lake Forest Drive, and Rockfield Los Alisos. These are also in the procurement phase and should be under construction this summer. We also have a couple other projects under construction, the Alton Parkway TSSP and the Portola Senna Margarita TSSP, and the El Toro Irrigation Conservation, which is removing turf to put in drip irrigation and drought-tolerant landscaping. We also have the Audible Pedestrian Signal Phase 4 in the procurement phase, and they should be under construction soon. Moving on to projects in pre-construction, we have nine projects in pre-construction. One of these is kind of in construction because we have done the painting at the Baker Ranch Park for the pickleball courts, and we should be having a contract awarded soon to restripe some of the other existing basketball courts at Foothill Ranch in Borrego and Pittsford. And we should have the El Toro conversion of the sand volleyball court up for advertisement in the next month or so. And we should have, uh, the El Toro, uh, conversion of the sand volleyball court up for, uh, advertisement in the next month or so. We also are working on contracts for the Foothill Ranch box lacrosse, lacrosse rink installation. The Baker Ranch Park Synthetic Turf Replacement, Heroes Park Lighting and the Sports Park Synthetic Turf Replacement. And we're looking to have the projects for the El Toro Corridor advertised in the next month or so. This is including the Geronimo Road realignment, add the El Toro Raised Medians and Resurfacing. And the Tribuco Arterial Median at El Toro Road. This would replace the delineators that are the plastic delineators with a raised median. Moving on to projects in design. We have five traffic projects that are, uh, currently in design for our residents. The Baked Toledo Road Intersection Improvements, this is funded by the Meadows Traffic, uh, Improvements. Uh, Geronimo Road Baked Parkway Intersection, which is a lift them project. Irvine is the lead on this, so we're just contributing our lift them funds toward that. Los Alisos Merlins, the dual lefts in all directions, we're working on the right-of-way acquisition with the school district. And hopefully we'll be out for bid, hopefully by the end of this year. Irvine Road Tribuco T S S P and Bake and Rockfield T S S P should be advertised shortly. We also have several park improvements, including the Normandale Open Space Area Renovation. Heroes Park Sports Field Renovation, which will level the infields and provide a warning track and fencing on one of the fields. The citywide restroom renovations and the Etni Skate Park Improvements. We're also looking at doing an arterial wall enhancement project in Southwest Lake Forest. There's a pop-up event that's going to be the first weekend in May where we'll present some of these concept ideas to the neighborhood. And see what they have to say about them before moving on further with the project. We have seven projects in pre-design. The Aliso Creek Drainage Repairs would fix a damaged, uh, culvert that, uh, ex, or dumps into Aliso Creek. Where it's, uh, there's been some erosion and the culvert is kind of eroded away. Uh, the Nature Park and Lake Forest Park and Kavanaugh Park and Peachwood Park are all neighborhood park enhancements. That, uh, Community Services is currently doing some outreach on to get, uh, some input before we go out for design. Uh, Lake Forest Sports Park Renovations would renovate the community rooms. Vintage Park Phase Two will fix some fencing and some retaining walls. And the Protective Permissive Left Turn Project was placed on hold by council, uh, to allow the current T S S P, or the current, uh, Protective Permissive Program to have some, uh, years to have us monitor. In summary, we have completed thirty-three projects, ten projects in construction, nine in pre-construction, ten in design and seven in pre-design. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Bringing it back to council. Councilman Teddermer.
Uh, thank you. I know this is one of those things that, uh, I feel we should promote as much as possible. Because there's a lot of work that goes on to, uh, make a lot of improvements throughout the city. And I, I appreciate all the good work that Public Works does and all staff to help advance all these projects. You guys are busy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I want to say thank you for our C I P on tour of the city. Um, and seeing, you know, obviously this puts it in highlights of what, what we're doing and how busy you guys are. And, um, trying to make improvements for our city and, um, traffic improvements, park improvements. Thank you so much for the work you guys are doing and, um, I guess I will ask if there's any public comments.
There are none.
Well, seeing there's no public comments, this is just a receiving files, so thank you for the great report, great time. Um, I'm glad it was you rather than Tom because he would have taken longer, but thank you so much. And I really appreciate, I really appreciated the, the, uh, tour you guys gave us the other day. You know, we really are a well-run city and the fact is, you know, mitigation of our public works is really important to us, so thank you. And that is item number fifteen. That brings us back to City Managers' Report.
I have nothing additional this evening.
Oh, hallelujah. It's a holy week. Councilman, um, Serbo.
Thank you, Mayor. So the logistics that go into some of our community events really just continue to impress me from our staff. So the Bunny Blast was a beautiful day, lots of people having a great time. Opportunity to see magicians and all sorts of rides and the petting zoo and just a great time. So it's wonderful that our community was able to take advantage of that, so it was a fun time, uh, being there. We had talked earlier with Diane Dixon about this whole issue about the fire severity maps. And just to remind everybody that the California League of Cities has a group that I'm a part of. And today we had another meeting every month. We're trying to get updates and talk about feedback and ways to help mitigate the insurance issues. And these fire severity areas, and I know our city manager is involved in that kind of thing too. So just to give our community information that we are involved and we have the investments in the California League of Cities that is actually paying us dividends. And finally, just want to also wish everybody for this coming weekend a very happy Easter. Thank you, Mayor.
That brings us to Councilman Teddermer.
Thank you very much. I also attended the Bunny Blast and it was a postcard day, beautiful out that day, so well-attended. Uh, I attended the Bennett Ranch H O A Community Meeting, which was always nice to talk to those folks and get them caught up on things going on. I went to Clean Lake Forest and grabbed a bag and walked home and filled it up. Uh, and also, um, like to recognize Orange County Fire Authority. I had a wonderful day doing, uh, a ride along with them today. And, uh, I'm very impressed with all the, what they do and how they do it. So please extend a thank you again to the crew I was with today. I had a great time. Thank you.
Councilman you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I want to seek a consensus for a proclamation from the council. Uh, declaring May twenty twenty-five as Asian-American month and also Jewish-American month in the city of Lake Forest. Yeah, we done in the past.
We have. Madam City Manager, have we done, um, those, um, in the past?
I don't recall, um, both of those. I believe we've done Asian-American. I don't recall the second one though, but I can find out.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
And, uh, happy Easter.
Thank you, Councilman you. I too attended the Bunny Blast. Um, I, I was amazed by how many kids were out. Um, it was a great weather, um, beautiful day, um, for a beautiful holiday. Um, and that'll, um, bring us to close. I want to wish everybody, um, a happy and blessed, um, Easter week and a wonderful Easter. Thank you, um, council. Thank you, staff. God bless and have a great rest of the week. Happy Easter.